Good morning and welcome to the November 16th meeting of the City of Lakeland Planning and Zoning Board. The Board meets every third Tuesday of the month to review proposals for changing the city's comprehensive plan, its future land use map, zoning changes consistent with the map, and conditional use permits. Board is made up of seven members appointed by the City Commission and is assisted by the staff of the Community and Economic Development Department and the City Attorney's Office. Staff will advance any presentation slides that should have been provided prior to the meeting. The meeting is divided into two parts. First part is a public hearing where we expect to hear new applicants explain their request and receive comments from affected parties. The second part of the meeting is termed the general meeting and primarily consists of acting on recommendations from staff about the cases that came up in the prior month's meeting. We invite everyone who wishes to participate to be heard. We do ask that you be concise in your comments and that speakers avoid being repetitive. That is, if several people have pointed out traffic concerns, there is no need to hear additional comments regarding the traffic again, but we would like to hear anything new that has not been addressed. In order to allow everyone to have an opportunity to speak, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and the clerk has a timer for that purpose. We respectfully ask that you adhere to this rule. We also ask at this time that you silence all mobile devices. If you do come up to speak, we ask that you give your name and address before you begin speaking. With that, we thank you all for being here, and I'll turn the meeting over to Secretary of General Grouse.
Good morning again. Item one, compatibility review to allow for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit above an existing detached garage on property located at 913 West Hollingsworth Drive. Owner, Peru Patel, applicant Daniel Fowler, Daniel Fowler Architect LLC. And this is for consideration of final decision.
Hello, good morning. My name is Damaris Stahl, Senior Planner with Community Economic Development. The subject property is located at 913 Lake Hollingsworth Drive. To the north of the property is the parking lot and the Hollingsworth Trail on Lake Hollingsworth. To the east, west, and south are all residential properties. The proposed accessory dwelling unit will be added to the existing garage. These are the current photos of the garage. The home is currently under construction, renovation, and those are all the construction materials that they currently have. And this is just another view from the rear and side yard of the property. As mentioned, the home will have the ADU added to the existing garage. So the garage is located on the far east corner of the property, and they're planning to add a driveway for the ADU as well. This is the proposed elevation for the ADU. As you can see, the home, the ADU will have windows on the front-facing facade where the garage doors are currently located, and towards the rear, on the west and east side, there will not be any additional windows. This window is an existing window on the garage. I do believe the applicant may be here. You have few words. I do have some conditions and a letter that was submitted, and I'll let the applicant talk first and go to that part.
Where should I go?
Here, right?
My name is Tom Gage. I work with Dan Fowler, and I'm representing the owner today, who could not be available.
Your address, please, sir.
Excuse me?
Your address.
Sure, I live at 907 East Lime Street. So this particular project, we did a design for the existing home, and that's currently under renovation, and this is an accessory building behind it that we designed to mimic or match the design of the building in the front, the house in the front, with a flat roof, a low roof, large overhangs, and just trying to keep with the design of the overall property. Do we have the drawing that shows the house with the property, with the...I know we submitted it.
The site plan?
Not the site plan. There was a, I think, on the full set of plans we submitted, there was actually a picture showing the existing house as it will be renovated to show how this compares and complements the home as well. But yeah, that's, we're just looking to add a little bit of space back there. And also, I think it was brought up too, the home in the front is a single-family residence, and it will be the primary residence of the owner. So this isn't a rental property, it's, the owner will live in the front, and this will be a studio apartment in the back. Does the, do you guys have any questions or...
Fair, so just want to make sure I understand you correctly. So I know that, that front property, you said the owner's going to be moving into that because that's been used for rental for the last few years.
Yes, it's been used as a rental. They will be living here full-time.
Okay, and back property will be rental or a mother-in-law's suite or what?
At this point, this would probably be used as a rental in the back.
I assume there's no regulation against that.
So the way the accessory dwelling unit standards were set up, they require that the accessory dwelling unit be fed off the master meter of the principal structure, and that's intended to discourage rentals, but there's nothing in there that prohibits the rental of an accessory dwelling unit. But again, there is the requirement that the principal structure be owner-occupied.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yeah, it's not going to be separately metered, and at this point too, they have a lot of family that lives out of town, and it may be used for that as well. There isn't a, they don't have someone to come in there and rent at this point.
Is it possibly that they would use it for an Airbnb?
I don't think so. In talking to the owner, I don't think that's their vision for the property, to have a lot of traffic in and out. They're really doing a lot of landscape work on the property, so I don't think, we haven't discussed that, she hasn't brought that up as something that she would like to do. She's an elderly lady that's, probably be more than she'd want to manage doing that.
Again, if I may ask, are there any city regulations against Airbnbs in residential areas at this point?
There are not, so we don't have any regulations adopted relative to Airbnbs or what we call short-term rentals, and there have been some legislative changes at the state level that essentially preclude us from now adopting any such regulations to, that would prohibit the use of properties for short-term rentals.
Has the city received any comments for the second story and surrounding residents?
We did, so Ms. Stahl did receive a letter late yesterday, I believe, or sometime yesterday, from an adjoining property owner, and she can summarize the substance of those comments.
Yes, so we did receive one letter from Brenda Pierce of 2302 Derbyshire Avenue. She is located west of the property, so if I go back, so here's the subject property, and she is located to the west, so she's here. In her letter, she stated that the addition of the ADU would further increase noise and decrease her ability to enjoy her home. She listed the following reasons, where because of the scale, the home would be much larger, the driveway that extends to the ADU would emit additional noise and fumes, and potential vehicles could shine into her family room. The additional people would also impact the area's population, and she also listed that the new construction would change the view of, from her family room. And she also mentions that, that the current owner, you know, the, since they do not reside currently at the property, that it would, it's not compatible with the area. For our, for us, accessory dwelling units are permitted in the urban context and where any legally conforming, single-family detached dwelling unit is, is on the same lot or parcel. A minimum of one street, off-street parking is required in addition to the parking spaces for the principal structure, and also ADU over a garage is acceptable, you know, for us. So we do recommend the addition to the ADU on the following conditions, that the principal dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit is legal residence of the property owner, and the development standards in accordance with RE1 zoning classification, so Section 4.3.2 of the city's Land Development Code, and also the site plan development, the project shall be developed in accordance with the site plan that was included, and architectural elevations of the project shall also be developed in subsequent accordance with the architectural elevations that were included.
So the letter that was received, as Ms. Stahl stated, is for the property owner on the west side of the subject property, and the proposed accessory dwelling unit, as you can see from the lot plot, is over on the east side, as is the driveway that accesses that unit's structure.
So it would be a minimum of 54 feet from her property, it's the opposite side of the property.
Is the primary residence a single-family dwelling?
Yes.
Is it a single, a single-story?
Yes.
Good question. So it is a single-family residence, and it is one-story, but the design of the building is such that half of the roof system is a lower roof, and half of it is an elevated roof with like, I think they're 12 or 14-foot high ceilings. So when you look at the property from the street, the, what would be the right-hand side of the house has a high roof, then a low roof, and then this structure would be towards the rear. And also, I'd like to point out that the property next to the garage actually is a two-story house as well. So as far as massing goes from the street, this isn't something that sticks up, it's something that actually still would even be below, be below the roof line of the adjacent property. And it's also wooded, there's trees on this as well, and we're not removing those trees, we're keeping the trees on the property. As you can see from the aerial photo, that there's, there's a lot of covered, coverage on the property.
So is it reasonable to say that having a two-story dwelling on the lot next to the woman that had the, sent the email, that in fact, they will be able to view into her backyard?
Yes, ma'am. So the two-story house is there would have a view into this person's backyard currently.
But the principal structure, the home is not, was under consideration by this board, it's just the accessory.
I'm talking about the accessory that's two-story, yeah, that's what I meant.
So the accessory building that has no windows viewing into the side yard.
But she, oh, they don't, okay, okay.
And as far as parking goes, we have provided ample parking off of the street for both the residence and, and the structure. So, and again, it's also wooded back there too, and I...
Was, was there any comment or questions from the resident on the west side of the property? That's who submitted the...
Oh, maybe east then, I'm thinking east, sorry.
Can you bring up the elevations? There are no windows on the second story there that would...
No, I'm asking if directly east of the parcel, the person who lives right next to them, did they send anything?
No, only Ms. Pierce was the only letter received.
You may want to ask if there's anyone in attendance to speak to this item.
Is there any public comment?
Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion to...
I move to approve the accessory dwelling structure as, with the conditions presented by staff.
Second?
Item two, minor modification of, minor modification to plan unit development zoning to allow for a three-story, 96,000-square-foot mini warehouse storage facility on property located at 3182 Private Franklin Drive, Lot 4 of the Wainwright subdivision. Owner, Miller Valentine Group, applicant John Kendrick, Chastain Skilman, Inc., and this is for consideration of final decision.
And I need to recuse, I was asked for a proposal on this project.
Good morning, I'm Philip Scares, Principal Planner with Community and Economic Development. This is a minor modification with a, with a, for consideration today. Site's located at 3182 Private Franklin Drive. It's in the Wainwright subdivision, you're probably familiar with it, north Lick and off of Kathleen Road, where the new McDonald's is, just, just north of the Walgreens Pharmacy. This is the proposed location of the site. This here where the subject property is, this aerial photograph, aerial was taken before the McDonald's was built, the McDonald's is right here. This is the subject property right here. This was a 13-acre PUD that was adopted in 2009 and was subdivided into six commercial lots. McDonald's is part of the PUD, but it's not part of the subdivision. And it came back in 2020 to get approval, to get a change, a modification on this lot here, which was Lot 1 to allow commercial uses. So Lot 1 allows commercial uses, Lot 2 is office uses, and then you have lots 4 through 6, which allow commercial uses that are C1, C3, and C4 uses. So we're, lot in question today is Lot number 4, and under the current Land Development Code permitted use table, mini storage is not a permitted use within the C1, C3, or the C, C4s, any designation. So this is a modification to allow a three-story, 96,000-square-foot self-storage facility. And I'm just going to go through some pictures here, this is looking south into the site. Again, it was just the, it was just, just platted and the road is constructed in there, so there's no development within the commercial subdivision yet. This would be the first proposed development. This is looking southeast, you can see the McDonald's in the background there, and the Kathleen Road would be where that truck is, and Walgreens is right next door. This is looking northwest at the end of the cul-de-sac there where the, behind, behind this, behind me where I'm taking the picture, that would be the subject site. There's also a lift station down here, there's a retention pond and another lot available for development. And then this is just looking east on their, on the main road, Private Franklin Drive, looking back towards Kathleen. This is a proposed site plan. And this is the cul-de-sac, this was a lift station, this was that retention pond that you saw, that was constructed in the pictures. This is the, the site here. It would be a three-story, again, 96,000-square-foot warehouse, eight parking spaces. This is not, this is just for exhibit-only, this is what the applicant's rendering is, what the, what the building would look like. See the front, this would be facing, this would be looking towards the, towards the, that's be the front edge facing towards McDonald's there. And I'm going to just stop here and pause and let the, see if you have, if you have any questions for the, let the applicant make their presentation and answer any questions, and I'll come back with a recommendation and conditions.
My name is Doug Fornian with Chastain Skilman, my address is 5540 Woodland Hill, Drive of Lakeland. As was mentioned, it's a minor modification to the PUD, it's got Walgreens and McDonald's to the front, retention pond to the rear, and also behind that, there's a warehouse facility, so there will be no, you know, change in that atmosphere of the surrounding area. In addition, I don't know if you're familiar with the storage facility going up across from Sam's, but this is the same developers, and they worked extensively with the city for the exterior facades, and this particular building's also going to have the same type of exterior treatment, so you know, it's, it's going to look nice, it's not going to look like, you know, just something slapped up, single-story type, type storage facility. Beyond that, I really don't have a whole lot to say about it. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any questions from the board? No questions? No, we have no questions.
You have no questions? Thank you.
All right, I did fail to mention that this is in a Neighborhood Activity Center future land use. The Wainwright subdivision is divided between two land uses, Neighborhood Activity Center and Business Park, this is within the Neighborhood Activity Center. We sent out 20 mail notices to property owners within 500 feet, we didn't receive any calls or emails and objection. The existing conditions really do not change much, I apologize, this is, this is a busy slide, but what we're doing is we're just adding in. We made a change to condition C there, says lots 4 through 7, those used permitted by right within the C1, C3, C4s, and in classifications, including no more than one self-storage facility on Lot 4, actually on an attachment D. And then in, change here on C3, on Lot 4, self-storage facility shall be limited maximum height of three stories and a maximum total square feet of 96,000 square feet. Other than that, there really weren't many changes, there, there are, there are no other changes to the, to the, to the PUD language other than these, these two, these were the substantive, there were some language, you know, changing attachments, but this will go as-is, the way you see it today. That's just finishing up the conditions, so. With that, staff does recommend approval of this minor mod, and will stand for any questions, you may have a staff.
And I don't believe we asked for public comment before we go ahead and consider about...
Any public comment, anyone from the audience? Okay, we hear a motion to approve the modification.
Motion to approve the modification.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Item three, major modification of plan unit development zoning to allow an apartment complex with a maximum of 244 multifamily dwelling units on approximately, approximately 12.07 acres, generally located south of Lake Miriam Square Shopping Center, north of Lake Miriam Drive, east of South Florida Avenue, and west of Lakeland Highlands Middle School. Owner, Public Supermarkets, Inc., applicant David Harry, Preferred Apartment Communities Pack, Carvout LLC.
All right, good morning again. For the record, Philip Scares, Principal Planner with Community and Economic Development. This is unlike the previous case, which was a minor modification where we gave you our recommendation, this is a major modification, so this will follow this, so this hearing today is a public hearing only, staff does not have a recommendation, we're just here to present the facts, and the staff will present their case as well, and, and then we'll hear from the public, but I just want to note that there is no staff recommendation at this time, this is only a public hearing. This is a major modification to the PUD to allow for an apartment complex of 244 multifamily dwelling units on approximately 12.7 acres. As you stated, it's located south of Lake Miriam Square Shopping Center, north of Lake Miriam Drive, east of South Florida Avenue, and west, most importantly, of Lakeland Highlands Middle School. The site was annexed into the city in 1985, it got planning and development zoning in 1993 as conformance zoning when the property was, after the property was annexed. It was also given a CAC, Future Land Use Designation, at the time. The PUD was originally approved for 180,000 square foot, 180,250, 180,250,000 square feet, 250 square foot commercial allowing C4 uses. At that time, the southern portion of the site, east of the entrance drive, was designated as a 500-foot buffer, and I will show you that now. I was talking so much, I forgot my slides. So we'll just go back to the location here, here is the proposed location, this is on the east and west side of the entrance drive going into Lake Miriam Shopping Center off of Lake Miriam. So when this was given its zoning, PUD zoning in 1993, this portion of the site here was designated as a buffer, this portion was still counted as within that development, so this, this portion here, and this is approximately, you'll hear 500 feet, you'll hear 485, I'll get into that here in a second. So like I mentioned, the PUD was established in 1993 to allow 180,000 square foot of commercial uses that were C4 with that 500-foot buffer next to Lake Miriam Drive. The PUD was amended again in 2002 to expand the commercial area, now it included this acreage here, so these two, these two undeveloped portions of the site were designated as Phase 2, and the existing portion was designated as Phase 1. So Phase 1 still retained its entitlements of 180,000 square foot of development. Phase 2 was given approval for 220,000, a little over 220,000 of, of commercial uses. As I mentioned before, the, the previous PUD in 1993 designated that 500-foot buffer, that was reduced to 75 feet along Lake Miriam Drive, and you'd see some, you can see some fairly mature oak trees that were planted at that time for part of that buffer, but no development obviously has occurred on this site. You can see in the photo here, again, the Lake Miriam Shopping Plaza, medical offices to the west, you have single-family, to the... To the south, you have, here is the Lakeland Highlands, you have some residential properties, and then further to the east, you have Lakeland Highlands Middle School. And just to the south, you have some larger lot, single-family uses. And then here, as you cross over the entrance Boulevard to Lake Miriam, you have, you know, you have a conventional, single-family subdivision. Some of these units along Lake Miriam though have been converted to some, some commercial There have been, there was an amendment in 2013 to the PUD to allow for the PDQ fast food restaurant here. And then we had two minor modifications occur in 2017 and 18. 2017 was a minor mod relating to transportation conditions in association with the reconstruction of the Publix there. And then 2018, a minor modification was approved for a 34,000, 34,000 square foot LA Fitness Center, which was never developed, and that was gonna go on this parcel here, on the west side of the, the entrance drive. Again, the current request is for 244 multifamily units in, within this Phase Two. Just go some slides here. This is looking west along Lake Miriam Drive. This is looking southwest at the single-family uses along Lake Miriam. This is looking east on Lake Miriam. And to the, over here on this, to the south, you have, you know, larger lot, single-family uses, which are over 150 feet, they're set back over 150 feet from the property line. And you can see the stand of trees that was planted there as well. It's looking northeast into the subject site. This is looking south at those single-family dwellings to the south. And in photos six and seven here, these are just, just looking into the site back towards the Shopping Plaza. This is on the entrance drive looking towards the Shopping Plaza. I think we're, if you live in South Lake and you're very familiar with this area. So I'm not gonna get too much into the site plan, I'm gonna let the applicant, they have a more detailed presentation, but I just wanna show you what their proposed site plan. They're proposing, again, like I mentioned, 244 units. These two end buildings here, so you have this building and this building, these would be the four-story buildings, shown in the site plan. The interior buildings here, those would be the three-story buildings with retention as well. Just elevation, looking, as you would, street view, looking at the site. Can I let the applicant explain these? And they're, they have a presentation that'll explain these, these elevations, but I just wanted to show these two real quick. This is what you'd be seeing on the road. This is visibility triangle showing the, the four-story units and the three-story unit from the aspect of the single-family uses that are to the south. And then this is a cross-section of the, the buffer. So the applicant proposes limiting that 75-foot buffer, that's a condition of the PUD, utilize the existing trees, but also they would have a wall and landscaping, enhanced landscaping along Lake Miriam Drive, utilizing existing vegetation and including more vegetation, so. But again, I'll let the applicant speak to that. I'm gonna go back to the site plan here. We did send out a total of 96 letters, and we received approximately 30 emails. I got some more this morning, I was trying to go through them. We got some additional emails today, but in total, about 30. To be honest with you, there are a few that were from the same people, so it's probably a little bit less than 30, but we heard the same things. Generally, the, you know, the comments were, obviously, traffic associated with Lakeland Highlands Middle School at peak times. Compatibility was brought up as well, but I think the overarching theme here is, is transportation. Again, during those peak hours during Lakeland Highlands Middle School, you know, those, those seem to be the, you know, the overarching theme there as far as the comments. Definitely compatibility, you know, with the single-family uses across the street, but overall, you know, traffic was, was the biggie there. We did indicate from, sent this to Polk County School Board for their review, and they did indicate that there were adequate capacity at Carlton Palmer, Lakeland Highlands Middle and Lakeland High School. We will get, if this gets ultimately approved and goes through site plan approval, we'll have official confirmation, concurrency review by, by the school board at that time, but indications now, they're showing that there is adequate capacity in the school. So I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant and let them provide you more detail about their, about their request, and I'll come back and answer if you have any questions of staff. But Kristel, can you switch the slideshow over, or do I need to do it?
Good morning. Elise Bautzel with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson, on behalf of the applicant. We are here today with our whole development team, so if there are questions about specific issues, we'll be here to answer your questions after the presentation. As Philip noted, the location of this property is at the northeast corner of Lake Miriam Drive and Florida Avenue. Again, it's approximately 12.07 acres. And from a compatibility standpoint, a planning standpoint, it's very important that this is within the urban development area, and it is within a transit-oriented corridor, which we'll talk about a little bit more. This is just an aerial of the site, so you can see the subject property in relation to the existing Publix development there. So the request today is to modify the approved plan to develop 244 multifamily units on the 12.07 acres on the east and west side of the PUD's entrance off of Lake Miriam Drive. We are planning to develop multifamily units in six buildings. As Philip indicated, there will be four three-story buildings to the center of the development and two four-story buildings along the eastern and western boundaries with amenities. We are asking to modify the buffer request, which is required along Lake Miriam Drive, to reflect the change of use from commercial to residential uses. Again, you look for a different buffer between commercial and residential, then residential to residential. We are providing parking in accordance with the Land Development Code, transit and bicycle space offsets. So as Philip already mentioned, this is already approved for approximately 34,000 square feet of commercial development on this site. And it's gonna be really important when we talk about transportation and trips later with our transportation engineer, that the development impact to the transportation network will be significantly reduced compared to what's there today. The future land use, of course, is Community Activity Center. Uh-oh, there we go. So just from a project overview standpoint, I'm gonna spend just a little bit of time to walk you through the site plan. Again, it's multifamily residential. There will be a mix of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartment units. The 244 dwelling units equates to about 20.21 dwelling units per acre. The three-story buildings, which will be at the center of the property, will be approximately not to exceed 55 feet in height, and the four-story buildings will not exceed 65 feet in height. David Smith, our Director of Planning, is gonna talk a little bit more about the buffering, but we are proposing an enhanced landscape buffering of 15 feet along the southern boundary, and he'll talk a little bit more about how we've enhanced that buffer. I must not be shooting in the correct direction here. What am I doing wrong here, Philip? Oh, there we go. At this point in time, I just wanna stop for just a moment and introduce David Smith. He's our Director of Planning and Development. He's gonna walk through consistency with the comprehensive plan and compatibility issues from a planning perspective.
Good morning. David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street, 33602, Suite 2100, Tampa, Florida. The Director of Development and Zoning for Sterns Weaver Miller, and I'm a planner, not a lawyer. Have to put that in there since you work for a law firm, so. As Elise has indicated, this is a planned development modification. To be clear and to kind of bounce off of what Philip had said and also what Elise said, is that Phase Two of the development is approved for 220,000 square feet of commercial uses, and the LA Fitness modification on part of this property that we're looking at was approved for 34,000 square foot LA Fitness. So I wanted to give you a sense of scale, that there's quite a bit of intensity in development already authorized within the PD to occur on Phase Two, and there's a specific approval for a LA Fitness facility on the property. And that will become important when the transportation discussion occurs in indicating what the impact is of our particular project. The slide that's up for you right now talks about consistency with the comprehensive plan. As indicated, Community Activity Center is the designation on the property. The Community Activity Center allows a full range of commercial uses, but it also allows for residential development of residential medium and residential high as part of a mixed-use development. Looking at the overall intent, when you couple this with the transit-oriented corridor, overlay provisions, transit-oriented corridors are identified to encourage a mix of complementary uses and with medium to residential high land uses along key designated corridors. As already indicated, Florida Avenue running south is a transit-oriented corridor, and in fact, there is a transit stop located within the shopping center itself. So this proposed project would fulfill multiple goals under the comprehensive plan, providing a mix of complementary uses, providing for some capture. It also provides for a transition between the commercial center of the commercial public shopping center itself, and as you move to the south, provide for residential uses. It is not uncommon in, in all planning to have commercial uses, multifamily, low-density residential as a transition across sites and through land use designations. So as indicated in the slide, complementary to commercial development is what we're proposing. The proposed development on the transit corridor also permits this residential development at the proposed density. You can go up to 22 units per acre in a transit-oriented corridor. And in fact, the policies in the land use plan require minimum densities to be achieved when you're within these corridors. And the idea being is that where you have mass transfer, multimodal opportunities, you wanna have an opportunity to capture those with either rental product or higher-density product. And oftentimes renters are more likely to be using transit than single-family development, which typically rely more on the automobile for their purposes. So let me go to the next slide, if I can work this. Yeah, just next slide, it'd be great, thanks. Appreciate it, Philip. We can go one, one more. Okay. So looking at the, looking at the overall project, what has occurred over time, we've worked with staff through the DRC process to develop a project that aligns the corridor coming in off of Lake Miriam through the center drive, which is signalized intersection, to basically create more of a urban form. So basically, you have development of buildings on the internal drive facing the street. That provides for a pedestrian-oriented, walkable corridor as you come off of Lake Miriam Drive. And it also sets the small ends or the short ends of the buildings facing the single-family across Lake Miriam. So rather than having a east-west configuration of a multifamily building, we've oriented these more in a north-south fashion, so that when you're looking at it from the street or you're looking at it from across Lake Miriam Drive, you're looking at the short end or the small end of the buildings. And where we have taller buildings, those are further away from Lake Miriam Drive and also further away from the single-family development on the south side of Lake Miriam Drive. Where we have the larger four, four-story building, that is also lining up with where the greater setback, single-family lots are. There's quite, there's quite a differential between on the west side of the site across Lake Miriam, where you have the single-family, which are smaller lots, and when you go to the east, there are much larger lots and they're set much further back. So we tried to orient the larger building where it is across from the larger lot subdivisions. Next slide, please. So this gives you the perspective of looking across Lake Miriam Drive at the development. The top portion of it is looking on the east side of the, excuse me, the west side of the site with Lake Miriam, the entrance drive at the signalized intersection between the two buildings that are on the top center. And then on the south, that is the eastern end of the building where we have the retention pond and the larger building. Next slide, please. This also is the same perspective, we can go one more. So talking about the buffer, you know, there had been a 75-foot buffer when it was related to commercial, and that is very understandable. You wanna have a greater setback where you're gonna have possibly loading and unloading, dumpster situations, commercial traffic, headlights from people parking in commercial parking lots. And, you know, in a residential setting, a couple things occur. One, this site is gonna be set down a little bit, that we retaining walls, so that we have a couple things working for us. One will have an elevation change that's dropping the level of the site. We'll have a retaining wall so that the headlights from the property are blocked by not only shrubbery, but they'll also have blocking any headlights parking in those spaces due to the lowering of the grade of the site. And then we have the enhanced buffer that not only utilizes existing trees to the extent possible, but also commits to species that will grow to maturity to provide additional screening as they develop, and also dent hedges that will also provide a screening and buffering to the properties across the street, but also to the people on, on the sidewalk. Next slide. Transportation will come up and discuss the overall impacts, but in just in summary, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan designation of CAC. It's been site designed to be sensitive to the neighbors and surrounding. It provides a transition from the commercial to the residential, low-density density residential to the south, and is also complementary use identified in the comprehensive plan for transit-oriented corridors. They'll be here to answer any questions after closing the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michael Razor with Razor Transportation Consulting, 19046 Bruce B. Downs Boulevard, number 308 Tampa, 33647. I'm a registered professional engineer with a special, specialty in traffic engineering with 24 years of experience. I performed the traffic study for this project, which considered 244 multi-story apartment units with access via connections to Lake Miriam Drive and South Florida Boulevard, which currently serve the Lake Miriam Shopping Center. The traffic study identified that there is a lack of any significant impacts to the adjacent or area roadways as defined by the 5% of capacity threshold. The results of the traffic study did identify that Lake Miriam Drive exhibits a transportation deficiency, Level Service E rather than the Level Service D standard. However, the study also shows that development of the subject project is not anticipated to have a material impact upon that deficiency specifically, and as the graphic on the screen shows, for the AM peak hour condition, the background arterial speed for Lake Miriam was identified as 13.9 miles per hour. was identified as 13.9 miles per hour for the background condition without the project, and with this project, it would be 13.8. So a difference that would not be perceptible to the motoring public, if you will. For PM peak hour conditions, very similar, 11.3 for background conditions compared to 11 for with project conditions. And from the graphics on the screen, again, you can see that there's no material impact that would be perceptible to the motoring public. Next slide, please. Furthermore, the subject rezoning will result in a decrease in trip generation from currently approved entitlements. As you've heard already, there was a 2018 approval granted for a fitness center, 34,000 square feet, where the accompanying traffic study for that evaluated 40,000 square feet of retail entitlements, which had a trip generation potential of 3,224 daily trips and 276 PM peak hour trips. The subject apartment complex has a trip generation potential of 1,328 daily trips and 104 PM peak hour trips. And also, the AM values are shown on the slide as well at 172 and 82. So the apartment complex is identified to generate less than half of the trips associated with the 40,000 square feet of retail, as was previously studied in 2018. But furthermore, and maybe even more importantly and more significant, Phase Two of the PUD carries the 220,000 square feet of retail entitlements, which has a trip generation potential of just over 10,000 daily trips with just under 1,000 PM peak hour trips, again, compared to the apartments at 1,328 daily and 104 PM. The reduction, the apartments are at 13% of that total trip generation compared to the existing entitlements on a daily basis, and 11% of the trip generation on a PM peak hour basis. The transportation improvements required to mitigate the prior higher-intensity development proposal are already in place, having been constructed in the last couple of years, and these consisted of modifying Lake Merriam Drive west of the site to carry a three-lane cross-section continuously from Florida Avenue south to the project site access connection resulting in additional queuing, queue storage, rather. The project will access the adjacent roadway network via two signalized intersections, one directly to the south at Lake Merriam Drive and one through the adjacent commercial center to South Florida Boulevard. In addition, the project will pay its transportation impact fees. The city fee is around $450,000. The county fee is around $380,000, resulting in a total transportation impact fee of about $830,000. There is a transit stop located internal to the adjacent public shopping center with a bench and a shelter, and as you heard, this is in a transit-oriented corridor area. And with that, be happy to answer any questions as they come up regarding transportation. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do. I have a question. I have a question about the transportation graphs that you put up.
Sure.
So you mentioned it was compared with in 2018, an LA Fitness Center that was supposed to be proposed on that parcel, but instead it went into the plaza where there are multiple ingress and egress areas and lots of parking. So how does a non-existent LA Fitness on that parcel make for a traffic study?
Philip, can you pull up one of the staff report graphics that show the overall site and the change areas? All right. On the screen, you'll see where it says area of change. Those two polygons, one to the east of the access drive is a rectangle and the other is an east-west rectangle, the other is a north-south rectangle with an L, more or less. So on the west side of that access drive is where the LA Fitness would have been proposed. So that adds, from my understanding, specific approval. But more importantly, again, that area that is the area of change carries with it 220,000 square feet of commercial entitlement. So that commercial entitlement results in 10,000 daily trips, 1,000 PM peak hour trips. The apartment complex, by comparison, is just over 8,000, 1,300 daily trips and just over 100, 104 PM peak hour trips. Again, a reduction of 87% daily and 89% PM peak hour.
I believe you're referring to the former Lifestyle Family Fitness, the LA Fitness took over several years back. That was the location they inherited. They were using, they rebranded, but they had intended to leave that property in a little freestanding location. That's what he's referring to, and they ended up changing course after that. And I believe they closed the current location during COVID. So most recently, it was Spirit Halloween store, but that's no longer there inside the actual center.
Did that answer your question adequately?
It answered it.
Thank you.
I have a question about that section of Lake Merriam. Are you, if I'm understanding you correctly, that the work to provide the infrastructure and the traffic throughput has already been done in that section?
The condition of approval that was associated with the prior development requests has already been constructed, and that was modified in the section of Lake Merriam Drive west of the site access connection to South Florida Boulevard, where previously there was a relatively short left turn lane approaching State Road 37, South Florida Boulevard. And that area has been either repaved and restriked, or at least restriked, to provide essentially a continuous left turn lane through there to increase the queue storage capacity approaching State Road 37. That was the transportation condition that was specific to this beauty, the remaining transportation condition.
But there's two lanes, one eastbound, one westbound, that are through lanes. The rest are just turn lanes.
That is correct.
Is that, does anybody on staff know, is that section of road on the county's list to widen? Because I know on the west side of that Florida Avenue and Lake Merriam-West Pippen intersection, that is going to be widened, and that work is already in progress.
That's correct, and Mr. Barbie is at the podium, too. He'll answer your question.
Thank you.
He always does.
Good morning. For the record, Chuck Barbie, Community Economic Development Department. The section west of Florida Avenue, as Ms. Tom said, is currently under construction. The county's adding a middle turn lane as part of an overall Pippen Road corridor widening project that runs from Florida Avenue out to Medalla Road. So that project is under construction, scheduled for completion in 2024. The section east of Florida Avenue on Lake Merriam Drive, nothing is currently programmed in the county capital improvement plan for that section of road over to Cleveland Heights.
Okay.
Chuck, can you confirm that that is a constrained corridor? Is it not going to be widened?
We have looked at it. In fact, the original, back when the PUD was modified back in 2002, there was a condition that said that Lake Merriam Drive had to be widened to a three-lane section from the Publix frontage over to Cleveland Heights Boulevard. There are a couple of issues that did make that a constrained corridor. One is that there's a very large transmission pole that was installed sometime around 2011 on that section of Lake Merriam Drive that really precludes the ability to make a full three-lane section. The other is kind of more of a funding issue is when the PUD was amended in 2002, the city was collecting impact fees on behalf of Polk County in addition to the City of Lakeland. So we were in a better position to take both city and county impact fees and apply them to Lake Merriam Drive to complete a project. Since that time, the city has continued to collect impact fees for state and city roadways, but the county, I think it was around 2010, or 2015, rather, adopted a separate ordinance to collect only county impact fees for county facilities. So in terms of funding options, we're very limited now in terms of how we can assemble dollars to improve that middle section. So it was a combination of funding as well as that large transmission pole on Lake Merriam Drive that made that a constrained corridor.
And just to reiterate, when folks hear widening, they may assume two to four lanes. You were talking about a three-lane section for that hole.
Exactly.
So one lane each direction and a turn lane.
Simply the addition of a middle turn lane.
I've got some other traffic questions.
When you're talking 244 multi-units, if your traffic predictions based on 244 units, but they're multifamily, so we're talking 244, you're probably talking quite a bit more in the number of vehicles that will be on the property going in and out all the time, if you're talking multifamily units.
I'll just say from a overall trip generation standpoint of how we look at multifamily versus single-family, is that multifamily trip generation is somewhere around 70% of a single-family detached home. And so overall, on a per-unit basis, multifamily units generate less traffic. The other issue here that's really not factored in the overall analysis is that correlation or that relationship between the residential and the commercial within Lake Merriam Plaza.
I understand. I missed state my attempt. 244 units for the multifamily, whatever that is, you have 244 homes there. You're talking, in all probability, quite a bit more in the number of vehicles that will be on that property as a result of those 244 homes, whether they be single-family or multifamily.
Just to clarify, Mr. Phelps, and what they're proposing is 16 studio apartments, 106 one-bedroom apartments, 92-bedroom apartments, and 32 three-bedroom apartments. So.
All right. So your one-bedroom apartments probably are going to be single auto, single auto homes, shall we say. It might be some double auto homes. But I think we're talking a lot more traffic. We're already looking at an area that's, almost any time of the day, you have traffic problems, traffic jams, you have a lot of vehicles on there, but you're pouring all these additional cars or vehicles in there, and there's no widening, and you have schools, school is still going to be the school, that's not going to change. I just don't see how, I just don't see any accommodations being made to, as a result of this additional vehicles that will be there.
So, I mean, it's a good question, and this comes up quite often in regard to transportation. A couple of the items that I like to note is that not every single resident in every single unit is going to be leaving at the same time or coming back at the same time. So.
But your peak hours.
So according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is the quote-unquote, you know, "the resource" for traffic studies, and it's in its 10th edition, it's packed full of hundreds and hundreds of studies for residential uses. The trip generation for this, for 244 multi-story apartments on a daily basis is 1,328. Now, that's ins and outs, so that's, you divide that by two, we're looking at 650 plus another 14, 664 trips in, 664 trips out any given day. During a peak hour, during the morning peak hour, that number is 82. That's 21 trips in and 61 trips out. And again, this is based on solid data that's been compiled over a good amount of time with the decades, but with the older data trailing off and being replaced with new data. And again, this apartment complex is located such that you do have access to Lake Merriam via a traffic signal, and you have access through the plaza to another traffic signal at South Florida.
Have you driven through that plaza?
In regard to, in regard to traffic, it's the path of least residence. I've been to the plaza, and actually, that plaza is scheduled for renovation in the very near future.
I know, but that's one of the worst to navigate through in the area.
So in regard to trip generation, when you say there's going to be more cars, well, compared to what? Compared to the vacant land? Yes, there will be more cars generated compared to the vacant land. There'll be significantly fewer, approximately 90% fewer cars than if that site was developed at its full intensity under its absolute current entitlements at this moment.
But we don't know that because it's not developed. So that's not a fact.
It's entitled for 220,000 square feet of commercial entitlements. So we're here to change that from commercial to residential at a 90% decrease in traffic.
So today, someone could, without coming to this board, come in through the typical site development review process and construct that amount of commercial intensity without requiring a change to the zoning. So when they do their analysis, they're looking at what that maximum amount is that could be achieved today versus what's being proposed.
But it's not to say that the entitlement precludes any transportation improvements, right? So if whatever the maximum density goes in there and they come in with a traffic study that shows that it affects traffic, they may have to have some improvements to simply to say that they're reducing, thus they don't need to make any improvements.
Right, and I don't know that that's what's being discussed now, correct? And so this is just comparison at this point for purposes of allowing us to then go forward and look at conditions for this particular development.
So I've got a couple of transportation questions while we're here. What percentage of traffic were you modeling to go out towards Lake Merriam versus going through the Lake Merriam complex? And I only ask because I'm more concerned about, like, we're assuming if folks are going to go through the complex, I don't necessarily think that is going to be the route they traditionally want to take to get out to South Florida.
The majority of traffic in our study is assigned directly to Lake Merriam.
Lake Merriam directly. And then, did you guys look at what that effect would be on not just the signal at Lake Merriam, but also at South Florida Avenue?
We looked at South Florida, Lake Merriam in South Florida, and Lake Merriam and Cleveland Heights as well. And again, what I had said previous stands that the traffic generated by 244 units does not result in any material changes to how things are operating today. Again, the city's threshold for determining a significant impact is a 5% of capacity, and we're maybe half that at most on any area road segment. So it's not, it's not, it's not a significant, the project doesn't significantly impact the area roadway network and those locations that were included in the study, the adjacent segment of Lake Merriam, the direct access connections to, via the signals to Lake Merriam in South Florida, and the intersections of Lake Merriam, South Florida, Lake Merriam, and Cleveland Heights. There were no material changes with the project traffic added to what's out there today.
And then was there an assumption of, because the transit-oriented corridors have been brought up quite a bit, was there an assumption of use of transit from these folks?
I'm glad that you asked that question. Our study is, usually these traffic studies are done in more of a worst case, so we did not take into account a reduction for transit. We did not take into account a reduction for the internal capture that will occur with the adjacent commercial plaza. So in that regard, we're not having a significant material impact for a worst-case type of analysis.
And then, lastly, are there any anticipated amenities within the complex that will warrant pedestrian traffic from one side to the other that was considered as part of this development?
No. Mr. Harry, who's here with Preferred Department Communities, says that they're not amenities that would require pedestrian crossing.
And to follow up on Mr. Locke's question, you know, there is a reconstruction project that's scheduled for Lake Merriam Square, I think, starting in 2023, which will not only reconstruct the existing public supermarket, but also the parking lot. So one of the things we've been working on is trying to coordinate this development proposal with that reconstruction project to make sure that we continue to have a better pedestrian circulation system, and frankly, a better traffic circulation system to get traffic out to the Florida Avenue driveway south of the Chase Bank, as well as get better utilization of that signal up at the Lake Merriam Square entrance. So this is kind of one side of a two-sided coin. That will include, at the end, the intent is to have better pedestrian circulation, better access to transit. And there is a crosswalk that is shown on the access road to Lake Merriam Drive as well, about mid-block between Lake Merriam Drive and the shopping center, to facilitate access back and forth between the two sides of the apartment development. So we are looking very closely at how those other transit pedestrian and bicycle modes are accommodated because of its location within the TOC or the transit-oriented corridor.
We do have some materials to submit into the record, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. I'll have David submit those to you and to the clerk with your approval. Would you make sure that Mr. Simpson gets one, too? Thank you. So just in summary, before we conclude, there are a significant amount of commercial entitlements already entitled on this property. And to wrap that back to the transportation comments, we talked about what's theoretical. That 40,000 square feet for the LA Fitness, that is not just approved, but the transportation improvements associated. transportation improvements associated with that site development plan have already been made. So, those trips, which are more trips than we're generating today, have actually already been incorporated into your transportation network and accounted for. I just wanted to clarify that, because I think there was a lot of back and forth on that. We have taken great care in site design, as you heard David say, orienting the buildings on their short end, greater setbacks from the four-story buildings, as well as that enhanced buffer along the southern boundary, including retaining walls, dense hedges, and utilizing the existing mature vegetation. Again, we are replacing current entitlements, not adding to. And if you could go to the very last slide. It's just got the team on it, I think, if you go one.
Was that for your presentation?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, sorry. It's okay. Not important, Philip. I just wanted to say that all of our team, including our engineer, Matt Campo with Campo Engineering, of course, you've heard from Mike Grazer and David Smith, and David Harry with Preferred Department Communities, we're here to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Any comments? Do you have another question?
I do have a question. I noticed that there were some existing vegetation on the site internally. Will that be removed for the retention pond?
David Smith for the applicant engineer shaking his head yes. Internal to the site, because of the retention pond, in order to do that, you have to remove that vegetation.
Will some of it, I noticed that there's some heavy vegetation along the single-family property owner to the east. Will some of that remain?
I'll have the engineer speak to that. Trying to not get out of my depth real quick.
Good morning. Matthew Campo, Campo Engineering, seventeen twenty-five East Fifth Avenue, Tampa, Florida. Just want to paint a picture to start with of how the site kind of is today as far as grades. You have to imagine this site at Lake Merriam compared to where the Publix is, there's about a ten-foot drop. So, on the perimeters, the intent is to try to preserve as much of that natural vegetation, the existing vegetation, on the east side as well as on the south side. When you get into the center of the site, just to touch on that, that you asked about, this site is like kind of a remnant of the old burrow pit that was there. So, there's a depression in there, it's grown like a mixture of vegetation, but that obviously would be intended to be removed. But again, with, you know, looking at preserving those perimeters, the other thing with the site plan, as you may have noticed, is that to the west, or to the east, there's a very large stormwater pond. You know, the banks of that also would be planted and have additional vegetation that could ride a fairly large buffer to the, to the east.
Okay. Yeah, I'm concerned about that single-family resident backing up to the site.
Any other questions? Any comments from the audience?
Mr. Chair, may I? We're going to open it up to public comment now. I'm assuming that several of you are here to speak. I just want to fill you in on the process. You'll get three minutes to say what you need to say, and then, because the applicant is presenting this application, they'll get an opportunity to respond at the end. And then, the city staff's going to take all this information in, and will come back next month, and the staff will make a recommendation based on all the public comments and all the materials that have been submitted by the applicant. So, if you want to speak on this item, now is the time for public comment. So, just, I guess, form a line or come on down to the podium.
State your name and address.
The answer should not be repetitive, anything that's already been said, that's enough from the audience. Please, give us your name and address.
My name is Dennis Michael Apgar, at three one one nine Bogart Boulevard West, Lakeland, Florida. So, while I'm not against the apartments being built, I, one of the people for the project mentioned that they're going to demolish the old Lake Merriam Publix. I stand in opposition to that due to its historic significance. Publix lately has been demolishing all their historic stores. They demolished the historic South Gate Publix built in nineteen fifty-seven and replaced it with a modern cookie cutter facility. I don't want that to happen to Lake Merriam Publix. It started out as a food world, which is one that, which was Publix's lower end market, supermarkets, and then it just was transitioned to a regular Publix. I recommend that the Publix be given a historic, historic preservation review, our study, in that hopefully, it would be restored back to its nineteen eighties, interior, late nineteen eighties interior design, the way it looked when I was a kid, you know, with restoration of the trazo and glazed brick flooring, and, you know. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you, I thought lady in the dark was waiting, either one of you, doesn't that?
Hi, I'm Debbie Wright, and I live at fifty twenty-seven Lake Merriam Circle, which is right across the street and goes out to Lake Merriam Drive. I can tell you any one day of the week, whether it be morning or afternoon, it can take me as much as ten minutes to leave my street because of the traffic on Lake Merriam Drive. You're now going to add a thousand cars, twenty cars, fifty cars, whatever, to that current over volume of traffic that's there now. There are many seniors that live on that street and that development. Most of them have to make right-hand turns, go down to the traffic light at Publix, go into the public shopping center, drive through the public shopping center to get to the other traffic light to get out safely and to keep their life. This, this development is just going to make things worse for those of us that live in the area. I understand it's good for the city, but there are also a lot of us that it's not going to be good for. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Deborah Walker. I live at forty-nine ten Liberty Lane, Lakeland, Florida, three three eight one three. But my daughter, which was notified, lives at five oh seven five Lake Merriam Circle. We were not notified, Liberty Lane, Liberty Hill subdivision, that is right beside the school on the corner of Cleveland Heights and Lake Merriam. We are in the city, and we were not notified, a city resident of this plan. Now, I know back in two thousand and two, there was a lot of grief on putting that cutoff road in to public supermarkets, a lot. There was a lot of upset citizens. I was told, but I guess I'm wrong, that with putting in the cutoff road, you, they were going to put a park in on the right-hand side of that cutoff road, that there was not going to be any extra traffic or anything, because that's what the concern was back in two thousand and two. You know, and I've always looked for that park, but that park has yet to exist, and then find out today it's still commercial. And then, find out that y'all are putting a, or they was putting at LA Fitness on the other side. LA Fitness is already, was already in Publix Plaza as one of their tenants. They have since closed up. I went to LA Fitness, and the days that I went, there was probably four people in that place. So, I don't know why they're trying to move it to another area when it was already in the center of itself, unless they had plans to do something different. But while it's on my mind, yesterday, now, I don't have, I don't have a thing to show you guys, but yesterday, if you look at the corner of South Florida Avenue and Lake Merriam Drive, I was on the other side of Pippen Road, three forty-five in the afternoon. Who considers that busy time? I don't, not on a workday. Traffic was backed up from that red light all the way past the red light for Lake, to turn into Lake Merriam Plaza. Now, we've had accidents, my time's running out, we've had accidents, there has been fatalities at the corner of Cleveland Heights and Lake Merriam Drive because of the traffic, people thinking they can get through the red light really, really quick, the people's not going to stop or this or that. There has, there's actually been fatalities. Okay. Oh, I'm counting down. But anyway, that's, the traffic is a very big concern, and unless you have been there to acknowledge it, deal with it, I'm sorry to go over, but you don't know what it's like. My daughter lives less than a mile from me, at Lake Liberty Lane to Lake Merriam Circle. Sometimes, her getting from my house to her house, it takes a good fifteen minutes. Now, that's less than a mile that she has to wait to get through them red lights, and until somebody shows some type of infrastructure. It's really burdening the citizens of that area, all of them, not just that one little area, all the citizens around that school.
Thank you, ma'am.
And there's numerous kids that walk to Lake Merriam Plaza in the afternoons when they're let out for school. It says no signs, but there is tons of kids, their parents pick them up at Lake Merriam Plaza.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, Liberty Lane is east of Lakeland Highlands Middle School, and the notification radius was five hundred feet from the property, so Liberty Lane was outside that radius, that's why she did not receive a letter.
My name is Jim Hampton, I live at one ten Hybrid and Way. Also a realtor in town, so I do a lot of driving. I'm going to reiterate or be redundant in what you've already heard about the traffic on Lake Merriam heading west to Florida Avenue. Even though they've extended the turn lane, it's still not long enough. You'd be backed up, back past the intermediate length that they're talking about. So, the traffic, you know, you're talking about two hundred and forty units, based on their percentages, that the folks presented here, approximately two hundred cars are going to be added daily in that, in those apartments. And if they travel two to four times a day, you've got a thousand cars, additional cars coming out of that intersection with the children, there's a real, real safety issue because they're going to be playing dodgeballs with cars, people trying to go to work, and unfortunately, drivers don't really look both ways before they turn right. So, the real issue is not just the congestion or the density of the cars, but the safety to the children of this neighborhood. That's all I would say.
Thank you.
I have so much to say. I know I won't get it all in. I'm Cindy Ross, I live at six oh seven Lake Merriam Drive, I'm down in the, on this form, the right-hand corner, and I own fourteen acres of that property. Both of my sons live next door, and my parents have us on a special elderly medical permit, live in my backyard. We constantly have cars running into our brick and iron fence out front because of car accidents, because of the stopping traffic from one red light to the other. It's only four tenths of a mile from South Florida Avenue to Cleveland Heights, and there are multiple accidents that happen in between, just cars stopping because of the length of the lines of the cars at the red light. They end up in my front yard, and I rush out and help them. Anyway, we know that South Lakeland is overpopulated. The Highlands, when they were first created and starting to be developed back in the sixties and seventies, that was supposed to be an escape for our community to get out of the tiny neighborhoods and the apartment complexes. People had three-quarter acre lots and acre lots, and people like our neighbors, the Clouds, had fourteen acres. In fact, we bought that property to prevent it from being developed into a neighborhood or an apartment complex. We didn't need the extra acreage. We bought it to prevent it from being developed. In nineteen seventy-three, when Publix did do their, they built that complex, Charlie Jenkins actually wrote a letter to the people, and in his letter, and on August twenty-second, nineteen seventy-three, he describes how, well, here's his words, "The boundary of the proposed shopping center is at least four hundred feet from the nearest residence," and skipping down. "According to the applicant, provided a buffer zone which would be five hundred feet deep to both the south and the east of the project, as noted in the table above, this provides a separation of five hundred and fifty feet from the nearest single-family residence on the north side of Lake Merriam Drive." That is why they have that property. It was intended to be a buffer. When they put in the cut-through road several years ago, we met just like this, they promised us they would put in a very thick berm. They haven't even maintained the oak trees that are there. So, you promised us this wall and berm. I'm sorry, but how many of you remember that? We, I'm sorry, it will not happen. It didn't happen before, and we were promised it. I stood up then, and I said, "How can you, can you guarantee us you will give us the berm?" "Yes, we will." Well, here we are, still no berm, even the trees are not maintained. I have so much more to say. Please do not approve this. Please.
Good morning, good morning. I radio, my name is Jason Liebrich, I live at six thirty-two Lake Merriam Drive. My property actually is sharing a property line with a school, so we have the long piece of property that runs all the way down the lakefront, and actually, we have water rights. So, I'm going to address a little bit of that. You can see that yellow line that runs right down the middle of the big portion of the lake, that is where our property is, and our water rights extend forty feet into the water. Like Ms. Ross was talking about, way back in seventy-three, when this all started, we did have a lot of my family's property. My grandparents moved down here in the early seventies and built the property right there on Lake Merriam, owning two lots. Excuse me. But what happened was, over years, the lake got extremely polluted, okay? We have a lot of frontage, we have a lot of land right there with trees, a lot of wildlife lives back there. But my family, my Uncle Ted, actually had to sue Publix, and able to get them to clean up the lake from the pollution that was damaging the lake. We have photos from the nineties where the whole lake was covered with hydrilla, choking out the wildlife, just really unacceptable. Like she said, best intentions to create environmentally friendly, big projects like this, sometimes they just don't follow through. I also have a letter here from Mr. Jenkins, Jr., dated for January fourth, nineteen seventy-seven, that states, "To the Code Enforcement Department of Polk County. This will confirm that Public Supermarkets, Inc., will be responsible for the maintenance of the parking lot, the landscape buffer area, the fence, the stormwater system, and the retention area for the above- referenced project. We will assume full responsibility for the maintenance of these items as long as we own the shopping center." I believe Publix still owns the shopping center, right? This was in, submitted in nineteen eighty-six. This is my father, which just passed away about two weeks ago. Up here at this meeting, stopping that, like they, like that everybody has mentioned, that land was intended and understood by Publix to that land was intended and understood by Publix to leave it as a buffer zone. Lake Miriam Drive is a historic, like the first gentleman said, Lake Miriam Drive is historic for the Polk County, for the city of Lakeland. It's cut through. It is a beautiful land, a lot of people have a lot of land on that property, it's a very, very special place, and we're developing everything else in Lakeland. Let's leave that buffer zone alone, as promised by Publix. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chris Oliver, I actually live at 620 Lake Miriam Drive, would be the closest eastern adjacent property on the northern side of Lake Miriam. I wanted to touch on what Cindy was saying as well, I actually brought some extra copies of the initial agreement when the zoning was changed back in 73, through Publix, if the board would like to take a look. Ms. Ross, there, there are a lot of the, the single-family residences, these have been the same families for years and years. We were pretty much promised whenever they, they did that, they specifically denoted 24 of the 48 acres would be, remain a buffer. That was kind of part of the deal that the surrounding residents were sold on to allow such a zoning change to occur. This kind of seems to contradict this new project, what we were promised. So I'm really concerned about it. I'm going to be probably one of the most affected residences, because I have the foliage right there, I would be right by the retention pond. So I'm trying to, I'd like to honestly see, have a better schematic of what my property is going to look like to the western side now. If, do you, do you all have any clearer pictures of, or anything, or is it just going to be a retention pond in my side yard? Because I imagine all the surrounding residents or property values are going to be significantly impacted by this. So I just want to make that clear, and also, I wanted to point out, there's probably 100 to 150 middle school kids that walk right down the, um, Lake Miriam, right there, in that area. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, the youth traffic there from school at 4 o'clock every day. That's all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, my name's James Middleton, I live at 4749 Highlands Place Circle. I guess I have, you know, a, a few concerns here regarding this property. One, I think the, you know, the notice, I know it's only 500 feet, but I don't think a lot of folks got noticed due to the, you know, there's not a lot of properties there. So if you drew that line out a little bit more, like in Hamilton Place or Liberty Hill, I think you'd have a lot more people knowing about it or involved about it if you're on social media, which I'm not really, but there's, you know, quite a bit of talk about that. So I don't know that a lot of folks got the right notification, even though it may have fell on the rules, I don't know that, you know, the, the right amount of people were notified about this project. The, the second part there would be, you know, the traffic on Lake Miriam is awful now, and there's nothing there. Like we've talked about over and over again, but I, I hear that the, the traffic guy, you know, at this point, I don't know what the, what I do, do we go with what we don't like the least? Because if they put an LA Fitness in there, or they put a Chili's or a restaurant or some other thing in there, what's the traffic flow for that? So that would be kind of, you know, one of my concerns is, would there be less traffic having the apartment complex here, or would there be, you know, more traffic if we let it go, you know, some commercial building, or, or a Publix, or a, you know, whatever, you know, other activity is going to take place there? You know, and, and like I said, traffic as it sits right now, if you try to turn into Publix, or you go to Publix, get your dinner, and try to come home to make a left turn, you're, you know, you're backed way up. Now you're going to have to drive through the center of this apartment buildings to get in or out. I just think that's going to, you know, just take that much longer. It's already busy and stressful, everybody's trying to get home, it's just, you know, just going to add to that. So I think that, you know, one of the bigger issues here is the Lake Miriam Road itself, and the turning lane, and how that flow works, and, and there's improvements coming for the, the Publix, I guess, maybe, you know, some of this approval should hinge on how that, what that layout looks like. If there's a, if we can direct more of those apartment residents out through the Publix parking lot, since Publix probably stands to make the most money off of this deal with all these new customers and all that, why don't we let them take some of the brunt of traffic and funnel them through, through the, the Publix Plaza versus out through Lake Miriam? Because, you know, you've got so many kids walking by, and the traffic, I mean, I'm not going to be a bleeding heart and talk about the children, the children, but it's certainly a concern, those little knuckleheads are out there running around and, you know, not paying attention, there's, as it stands right now. So let's add 250 plus more cars, you know, I, I think that's a, I, I think that's certainly going to be an issue. So I would say, make this hinge on what Publix has future plans to do, and make the entrance and exit be tried to funnel as best they can out to South Florida. And I'm concerned about the water out there. Make sure we're keeping all of the retention and the runoff from the parking lot and the buildings in the proposed retention pond. And that's all I have.
Good morning, Christina Jones, 3041 Cleveland Heights Boulevard. We've heard about the traffic, yes, we know it's no good. We've heard about the school and the children, we know that the children are out there, that we want them to stay safe. Let's talk about the interior of the school, I think that's another big thing that hasn't been discussed. These schools are already overpopulated and understaffed. So in the last year and a half, we all know, with the growth of the, um, just the property values in Lakeland, we're growing, and we have people coming here daily. People are enjoying Florida because it is open, people are enjoying Lakeland because it is beautiful and it has a lot to offer. These schools don't have room for more children, they don't have teachers for more children, so now we're planning to put in a family opportunity right in their backyard. Can this school handle it? I don't think it can. Can the elementary school around the corner handle it? I don't think it can. Speaking on the traffic, I live on Cleveland Heights, and yes, before 3 o'clock in the afternoon, 1:30, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, that traffic does back up from that Lake Miriam all the way down towards the YMCA, if not past the YMCA, in both directions. So you have it coming from Edgewood, you have it coming from Lake Miriam, the traffic is impacted, in my opinion, as a resident, and has been impacted for the last few years. I feel that the growth, which again is great for Lakeland, I'm not against the growth, is a fantastic thing. I think that it is harboring down our roads, it is causing a lot of traffic issues with accidents, lighting problems, along with, again, the schools. The schools in that area are not ready for this type of growth. That is an average one and a half children per unit at 244 units. That's just basic demographics, again, speaking on basic demographics that we discussed with the traffic incidences and the different, you know, areas and what will and won't be affected. Is the commercial opportunity good for us? No, commercial opportunity isn't good for us either. It was good to learn in this meeting that Publix did at once have a commitment to keep that as a solid buffered area. I like to hear that there was an opportunity for a park as well. If you look, there are no parks in that part of town. The closest park is on Edgewood, that is quite a hike for those residential areas in that, you know, neighboring little area. I think that a park would be good for that area, considering that so many people are concerned with destroying that property, so to speak. I understand that there's going to be a retention pond, I understand that there's going to be some foliage and some trees, but that doesn't really help with the growth that the building will also involve. So I just think that the city really needs to think about what it's going to do overall for the people in that area. It seems as though there's plenty of people from plenty of generations who aren't happy with this. I think that we have a lot of opportunity in those two spaces to do a lot for the community besides an apartment complex. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? We can't let you speak, we're going to allow a person to speak.
Um, just so, to very quickly go through the list, I want to address a few of the general, specific comments, rather, and then I want to talk a little bit general about neighborhood testimony and how that's typically handled in these situations. Mr. Appgar was concerned about the Publix. Publix is not part of our application today. Mentioning Publix was merely to clarify that we understood it was going through remodeling, and with respect to transportation, those, the accesses would be improved. Ms. Walker, and I think one of the other neighbors testified that they were upset that we were changing the park designation that was on a prior plan. There is no approved park on the existing plan today. I don't know what the history of that site might have been way back, but there isn't a park that we are taking out as part of our development. And Philip is shaking his head that there was never a park contemplated as part of the zoning approvals. With respect to the safety of children, we did look on Google, and I don't know, Philip, if you can pull up the crosswalk at the, the intersection of the children, but I just want to show visually, if you can't do that, that's fine. Basically, the crosswalks are all in place. The mechanism for schoolchildren to get across that intersection are in place when you look at the aerial map, and there are school crossing guards to ensure safety. So those are issues. Then maybe the school needs to put crossing guards, but the point being, there are mechanisms in place, and it's not this applicant's responsibility to ensure crossing off-site. We are, our responsibility, of course, is to maintain pedestrian safety within our own site and circulation. There were several references to this 1973 agreement. We looked at that piece of paper that was provided to Philip, and it was actually, I think, staff comments or a staff letter back in 1973. That was almost 50 years ago, and so this area was a much different place 50 years ago. It wasn't the suburban area that it is today, it was a much less intense, more rural area. And so what would have been applicable in 1973 certainly isn't applicable today. And as Philip has already indicated, there had been numerous changes to that site plan. There is no 500-foot buffer anymore. I mean, that's been modified by the subsequent changes that this body and the city commission have, have approved over and over through the years. It's also important to note that that 1973 agreement was actually when this property was in Polk County, so it didn't really have anything to do with the city of Lakeland at that time, it was annexed in later. One of the folks was talking about the, the private agreement, and, you know, to the extent that there is some kind of other private agreement between Publix and the neighbors, obviously that would be a private agreement between two landowners that wouldn't affect this development. We did comply with all of the notice requirements, and I think that city staff has confirmed that. And, and finally, I want to talk about the overcrowding of the schools. So school capacity, of course, and concurrency for school purposes, is defined at the time that you submit your permits, because things can change. Right now, the school boards are going through their 40-day count, and so numbers change all the time. Today, as you heard from Philip, there are no capacity issues with the schools, sorry, there are no capacity issues with the school at this time, but that could change. And these are the comments from the school board, saying that there's adequate capacity. So I, I want to go back just a little bit. There's a, there's a memo in your file, in your materials, it's, it's really mostly for Jared, but when you are considering evidence, it's really important for you to distinguish between layperson testimony and substantial competent evidence and expert testimony. And I just want to read a few things from Florida law that help define what it is that we should be considering here as substantial competent evidence on which you should be basing your decision. Anytime you have a hearing in this context, it has to be decided upon substantial competent evidence, and there's a standard for that, and I won't go into that standard, but they talk a lot about what is and is not substantial competent evidence with respect to testimony in these kind of hearings. All testimony from both laypersons and experts alike have to be fact-based and specific rather than mere generalized opposition. For example, their allegations that create a suspicion or speculation about what's going to happen is not considered substantial competent evidence. So we heard a couple of comments like, "This development will only make things worse." That type of testimony isn't appropriate for consideration in this forum because it's not substantial competent evidence. It's a, it's speculation not based on facts. In addition, Florida case law says, this is the Hialeah case versus Miami-Dade Charter, "While the facts presented by objectors," and there are several here today, "may be considered based on their facts, objectors' materials can't be given a cumulative effect simply because a large number of people agree with those facts or opinions." And so we heard many people talk about traffic, but your job as this planning board body is really to look at the expert testimony that came before you and to distill with the actual facts according to the experts. And finally, speculative concerns about future zoning of an area or the general desire to maintain the status quo, that is not considered substantial competent evidence. So we understand it's very difficult when change comes in, and it affects neighbors, and it affects neighborhood. We do this every day, and we understand and we sympathize. I mean, it's hard when something isn't developed and you have a development come in when you want things to stay the same. But unfortunately, that mere desire to maintain the status quo isn't a basis on which the body can, again, make the decision. And finally, there's a case which I think is really applicable, and it, it touches on almost everything that we heard today. "Lay testimony cannot be accepted on technical matters that would require expert opinion." We submitted to you all the resumes from our experts, including Mr. Razor, who's our transportation expert, and you heard the same type of information from your city staff, your city transportation staff. I'm going to read one sentence from that case because I think it's really important. "Lay speculation about potential problems such as traffic issues, light and noise pollution, general unfavorable impacts and property values," which we also heard today, "does not constitute substantial competent evidence." And I, I don't want to over-lawyer this situation, because I think we all recognize that everyone here has an investment in their own property and wants what's the best for their community. But it is important that you know the parameters by which you have to make your decision today. And we've worked very, very hard to design the site in a way that mitigates the impacts on that, that neighborhood to the south and to the west as much as possible. I mean, turning, we've turned the buildings, and we went through many gyrations of what this looked like, to make sure that we were mitigating the impacts as much as possible, enhancing the buffers, adding the walls. You saw the sightlines, I mean, we took a lot of care in saying, "What is this going to look like from the property owners to the south?" Could you pull that back up, Philip, if you, I'm sorry? I just want to... Um, sorry, no, I was, the sightline? That's okay. Point being that, you know, this wasn't planned out, let's just throw our prototype down on this property. There was real thought in site design about, "How is this going to affect the neighbors? What are they going to be looking at?" And we took great care, both from a landscaping perspective, from a buffering perspective, from an engineering perspective, right? If I am the property owner all the way to the east, for example, and there's stormwater, you know, we tried to design the site in a way that was thoughtful and compatible, and we worked very hard on that. So I'll stop there and just say that we appreciate your consideration, and we appreciate all the time today. Thank you very much.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I really don't like your opinion or your statement that these people who live in this area aren't competent. That bothers me.
I'd like to clarify that. What I said is that their testimony is not considered competent substantial evidence under Florida law. There was no indication that they are not competent people or, or invested people or articulate.
They're not competent to decide whether or not, or to have an opinion whether or not this is going to impact their lives and their properties?
Let me clarify one more time. That's not what I said at all. I think it's really important that you understand that the evidence that you're allowed to consider, you can consider lay testimony from a fact perspective, but there are things that you can't consider in making your decision, and I think it's very important that we clarified that on the record.
No, excuse me, and I understand what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying. First of all, nobody here is giving testimony, so nobody here is under oath.
I understand.
Secondly, everything that occurs here, the opinions of the audience, the opinions of this board, go before the professionals from the city. They review it, and then they come back and give us their opinions. So it isn't just something that's done willy-nilly.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you understand that. You're not under oath, we're not under oath, these folks aren't under oath. These folks are doing their, their, they're going to perform their responsibilities over the next couple of few weeks and determine their opinions, which weigh heavily with this board. So, nobody here is, is just going off half-pot. Everything is being seriously considered. These folks' opinions, these folks' opinions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The, I think what Ms. Bass was referring to is that there's quite a bit of case law in, in, in Florida courts when zoning decisions are reviewed by a court. The court makes the distinction between evidence that's presented to the board in the form of fact, a statement of fact, "I saw a car accident at this intersection," statement of fact, versus, "I believe there will be more car accidents at this intersection in the future." That's an opinion about a perceived or an impact that may occur as a result. And what the courts do is they distinguish between those two statements, the latter being the opinion. The courts want to see someone who has some qualifications to, to make that opinion. And so, that's the distinction that the courts make between the evidence. And I know we don't put people under oath here, but we do consider the, the speaking in front of the board to be testimony that's evidence that can support or, or not support a decision of.
Well, we also have, the department reviews everything after we're done.
If I, if I may, we just, we're also recording these proceedings so that the comments from the audience don't get, don't get picked up or made part of the record. So, we've tried to limit the comments to when you're at the microphone. But just to address your question, like I stated earlier, this part of the process is the board taking in all of the presentations from, from the citizens and both the applicant. And then the staff is going to be reviewing all of that. They're going to make their opinion on, on whether or not they're going to recommend approval. And we're going to come back next month and hear from the staff as far as what their expert opinion is. There are the city planners and they have the credentials to, to make opinions and, and speculation. So, they're going to present that next month. Normally, we don't allow additional public comment at the second hearing in front of this advisory board, but if things are different than what was presented today or there's new information to be added, then the board has discretion to have, allow more comment at the, at the next hearing. But normally, it's, this would be it for the public comment. So, I just wanted you to know that. I don't know if there's anything else I need to clear up or...
I would just add that if the staff were to come back with a recommendation with conditions and if this board were to recommend approval of those, it still has to go on to the city commission at which there's another public hearing. So, that, that would be another opportunity for public comment if it gets to that phase.
Yeah, so just to add to that, because I know there's a lot of folks that I haven't seen here, so you're probably not familiar with our process, but this is an advisory board. They're going to make a recommendation to approve or they're going to deny this application based on what they decide at the next hearing. If they recommend approval, it will then go to the city commission and because the city commission will have to pass an ordinance, it will have to be read in the record twice in front of the commission. The first hearing, they typically just read the title of the ordinance. And then the second hearing is when they'll have an additional public comment where you'll have an opportunity to speak in front of the actual city commission before they adopt or, or deny this application. If this board denies it, then that decision's considered final unless the applicant invokes the city's appeal procedures, which would then take it to the commission. So, and I, I would prefer it, I'd be happy to meet you outside and answer any, any other questions. I'd prefer to do it that way rather than speaking across the room like this, if that's okay.
And may I ask you one other question?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. You, you're the applicant, Publix is the property owner. Are these units rental units or are they condominiums?
They're apartment rental units, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Apartment rental units.
They are apartment rental units, okay. So, Publix will still be owning that property that they built them?
Well, you're buying that property, not leasing it, correct?
Yeah, we're looking at as a...
Yeah, I'm going to introduce David Harry. He can tell you a little more about the operational issues. I just want to make sure I don't misspeak.
Hey, my name's David Harry. I'm with Better Apartment Communities at 3284 Northside Parkway in Atlanta, 30327. Yeah, we're in, in discussions with Publix on the opportunity, in terms of the details of how that ultimately looks. That has not actually been resolved. So, as of today, they are still the current owner and we are the applicant.
That being the case, we will turn it all over to the staff now to consider and then they will come back with their recommendation at our next meeting in December.
That's correct. So, we'll come back in December with the recommendation.
Do you have a date?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Okay, right.
So, we'll be, we'll be back on this item December 21st.
Merry Christmas.
Mm-hmm.
Make it to my potluck after. Crystal. That's the pin, right?
Yes.
Nice dress, though. Nice dress, though. The 0212.
It wasn't insulting, I agree. I, I totally agree with you. Her condescending tone was super insulting.
Typical of 30-year-old women.
Well, I'm sure she's highly educated and I'm sure, I'm sure that...
Folks, could you go outside and discuss? We have, folks.
It was weird.
It was.
Excuse me, ma'am, if you could continue your conversation outside the chambers, please. Thank you.
Okay, moving into the general, general meeting portion. Item four, review minutes from October 19th, I believe, has the board had an opportunity to review those minutes.
Any corrections or changes to the minutes?
No. Motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All.
Item five, proposed text amendment to the infrastructure conversion and intergovernmental coordination elements of the Lakeland Comprehensive Plan, Our Community 2030, to update the water supply facilities work plan consistent, consistent with the Central Florida Water Initiative Regional Water Supply Plan, applicant, City of Lakeland.
Hello, good morning. Mary Stoll again with Senior Planner, Community Economic Development. Last year, the St. Jones and Southwater, Southwest Water Management Districts, along with the Department of Environmental Protection and Florida Department Agriculture and Consumer Services collaborated and approved the 2020 Central Florida Water Initiative Regional Water Plan. The plan provides a framework to meet all the water needs for the region through 2040 in effort to promote consistency between the comprehensive plans. The state required that we comply with these new updates and these following slides are just a, the statutory requirements for each of them. And just kind of summarizing it, each one of the requirements are coordinating with appropriate water management districts, revising our portable water sub-element and conservation elements, also revising our capital improvement element for which the local government is responsible for, including both publicly and private funded water supply items. Revising our intergovernmental coordination element and also during our evaluation and appraisal review is, our comprehensive plan amendments are necessary to reflect these changes of the water supply. So, for our comprehensive plan, we, we reflected these changes in the chapters three, which is the efficient and well-maintained infrastructure, chapter five, the attractive and environmental-friendly community, and chapter six, our responsible and assessable government. The water department created a water conservation plan. They use, we use that as part of our guidelines throughout these documents and we will include that, that plan that they have in our comprehensive technical document section since it is annually The work plan covers 10-year planning period, identifies alternative and traditional water supply projects and conservation and reuse activities needed for meeting future demands. Currently, we have, our water department has the smart water meter, they have the toilet rebate and just kind of bullet images here, just identifying those two programs. And then, our population demand that was updated recently for the water. The proposed text amendment, whoops. The proposed text amendment is consistent with our Lakeland Comprehensive Plan and it is recommended for approval.
Any questions?
I actually have a question. Is there any plan in this to provide more reclaimed water access to residents of the city for irrigation and that sort of thing?
Yes. So, in the water conservation plan from the water department, they actually have a section for reclaimed water. And there were, they have multiple programs. This, these two here that I have listed are just examples of some of the programs that they have for, for the water conservation. Reclaimed water, adding different sections along the city, also in the parks. They're going to be adding those as well throughout the park system and they're working together as well with the Parks and Recreation Department to include our Florida natural plants and landscaping to help with, you know, coordinating with the reclaimed water as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any kind of motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All.
Item six, major modification of PUD zoning for tracks B and C of Morgan Creek Preserve to allow for the construction of 321 single-family detached homes on approximately 129 acres, generally located north of West Pipkin Road, south of Mandela Road, east of Hamilton Road, and west of...
Minokee.
Minokee Crescent Drive. Owner, McTwo, McP2 LLC, applicant, John Hall, Polk Community Association, Management, Inc.
Hello, good morning. Joshua Chan with Community Economic Development. Again, the applicant is Polk County Association Management Incorporated and they are requesting a major modification of this PUD for tracks B and C of the Morgan Creek Preserve, which you see here. This property was included as part of the original 2004 PUD approval for Morgan Creek Preserve and it consists of eight undeveloped parcels of land which are located west of Phase One of Morgan Creek Preserve, located here. The majority of the property has a future land use designation of residential low with a portion of wetlands located adjacent to Morgan Creek being assigned a future land use designation of conservation, and that would be the green area here. Access to the site will still be from West Pipkin Road, as you can see here from the original site development plan. And that runs parallel to West Pipkin. However, it should be noted that the internal spriner, which you see here, which would have provided a direct connection between these phases, has been removed from tracks B and C as they are proposed to be developed independently from the residents' community located here. Again, that's Phase One of Morgan Creek Preserve. So, the applicant is now requesting a major modification of the PUD zoning to adopt a new site development plan. And this is the site development plan before you know. And as you can see, that includes a new lot layout, internal streets, access again from West Pipkin Road, buffering range and amenities that will allow for the construction of 321 single-family detached homes on these tracks. Now, these are smaller lots than what's currently allowed within the PUD, which is one of the primary reasons for this request. In terms of the future land use, residential low allows for a maximum intensity of five-to-one use per acre. As submitted by the applicant, the proposed subdivision would allow for a maximum of 321 single-family detached dwellings on again, 129.33 acres. And this translates to gross density of 2.48 dwelling units per acre. And this is well below what's allowed by the comprehensive plan. In addition, in order to reduce environmental impacts, as you can see here with this layout, the applicant has designed a site to avoid that portion of the subject property which falls within the floodplain as well as again, those wetlands and environmental insinuations here primarily to the north along Morgan Creek. This was the initial plan submitted by the applicant. This is what we saw last month. This is primarily what everyone was commenting on. It consisted of 140 lots with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square foot and 181 lots with a minimum lot size of 4,800 square foot. In response to the concerns related to compatibility that were expressed by staff, residents and the board during the October 19th meeting, the applicant has revised the site plan such that it still consists of 321 lots. However, with the uniform, a more uniform lot area of 5,400 square foot, these are 45 by 120 for the interior lots and then 6,600 square foot, these are 55 by 120 for corner lots. Within Phase One of Morgan Creek Preserve, the minimum lot size is 5,500 square foot. However, 46% of those lots most have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square foot. At last month's hearing, adjacent property owners to the east within Phase One of Morgan Creek Preserve expressed concerns about the proposed changes. Most of the comments received were related to longstanding issues pertaining to the developer's control and management of the Morgan Creek Preserve Homeowners Association. However, in addition to that, there were concerns raised about flooding as well as internal connectivity, the use of the existing recreational amenities and buffering as well. Primarily, the buffering concerns were related to this area adjacent to some of these larger lots, both vacant and improved to the west of the site. Chair, can you share the revised site plan? I think that's the old one. I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. So, just to point that out, this would be open space, this lot here, and we have some language regarding the buffer and I'll get into that in just a moment. In response, the applicant has agreed to conditions of approval which will ensure that tracks B and C are developed as a separate community with their own amenities which are independent of Phase One of Morgan Creek Preserve. These conditions include the provisions of a recreational and civic open space in accordance with subsection 3.4.6 of the Seasland Development Code, including the construction of a clubhouse amenity near the center of the parcel. Here you can see these amenities now in this area. And that's identified as recreation area. In addition to address concerns over flooding, the stormwater management system for these tracks will be required to accommodate a 100-year, 24-hour storm event. The specific design and engineering for the stormwater management will be subject to approval by the city's development review team and that will occur during subdivision review, which is the construction plans and the plat. and that will occur during subdivision review, which is the construction plans and the plat. Uh, and that will also be in accordance with the Southwest Florida Water Management District's permitting requirements. Uh, it's also important to note that the development of the site will require compliance of our tree preservation standards within Land Development Code, and the environmental impacts will be addressed, again, through the permitting process, through the state as well as SWIFTMUD. In addition to minimize visual impacts on adjacent residential uses, both existing and proposed, uh to the tracks, uh I'm sorry, to the tracks to the west of the, which I referenced earlier, uh the applicant has agreed uh as a condition of approval to preserve the existing row of trees located along the west perimeter of the project boundary. This is a natural vegetative buffer, and it would be maintained by the homeowners association. And uh, this is taken from Google Street View. Uh, this, I'll, I have a better shot than this, but this is looking to the northwest, and then this area here. This is the buffer that would be retained. It could also be enhanced, but that is, those are the existing conditions on the site. Again, we will review that as part of the uh construction plan review during subdivision review and uh ensure that that, that remains as it is. And again, there's always the opportunity for them to enhance that as well with additional um landscaping.
Can I just ask a question? We're looking from Pipkin Road into the site?
Yes, I'm sorry. Th- that's correct. We're looking north. Uh, this is an existing apron you see here. Uh, this is the edge of the western boundary of tracks B and C. And this is that vegetative buffer that we referenced earlier. And this is what would be preserved as part of this PUD modification. And again, we would also review that and verify compliance with that requirement during subdivision review.
Okay, so the lot, I believe it's forty-one, would be kind of where that gate is? Is that correct?
It's this area here.
Because it looks like those lots are right up on that buffer. Like, there's no designation of how, how wide that buffer is and where those lots start on the plan. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Like, for them to hold that buffer. Like, there's, like, it looks like it's about five feet that they're showing, and the existing vegetative buffer looks to be fifteen to twenty feet.
Correct. So although this is a, a binding site plan, when they come in for construction plan review, i- it could require that there be modifications to the actual construction plan, so that they would have to expand that. Again, they're going to have to show that on the construction plans, and they will have to show that they're meeting that requirement, because it will have to be preserved, and then again, it will be maintained by the HOA. So it may require that there be slight modifications when we actually see the horizontal construction plans for the project. But I, I understand your concern in terms of it, perhaps you feel like it, it's not uh, I believe this is the scale, but you feel like there needs to be more of a buffer there? Is that your concern?
That's my concern, because it looks, if you go back to the photograph, I would hate to see that natural buffer, and it looks like, just from viewing it, it looks between like ten and fifteen feet. And it looks like there's five feet shown on the plan. So I'd hate for them to go and clear out that buffer up to the five-foot area, and then you have nothing left. And then there's no condition of a type A buffer being required in its place. And, and that's my concern. And just in other developments, we have really kind of protected that landowner on the other side of these with a buffer. And, and that's just my concern.
Understood. A- at this point, they, they haven't provided a uh, a tree survey, um but um.
My understanding is they have met with Brian Dick from Parks and Rec. He has evaluated the health of the trees, uh which are predominantly live oaks, and they're in good health. Um, so at the time of subdivision plan review, um, you know, he would probably establish a minimum with, to ensure the health of those trees going forward. But we did ask the applicant today um to commit to a minimum width, which I believe we'll, we'll hear from Mr. Hall shortly about that. Um, so we have been having that discussion internally.
Okay.
I have a question. If you look at the, on the right-hand side, at the, the right angle at the bottom, how far apart are these lots? Because you've got three, two and a half lots that go on the side of one of those homes. So is that one home going to be looking? Nope, nope, the other side. Other? Nope, keep going.
The east.
There we go. Yeah, no, 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 you were right there.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is this, is this east of the pond?
It's east of the, where's the pond? I can't tell where the, no, it's down there, right in the left-hand corner, right where you just were. Now, in the left hand, my left, that, there you go, right there. There you go. So you've got those three lots that butt up against the side of one other parcel. How much is, I mean, that one house up there, are they just five feet away from the back of three houses?
Are which lots?
I can't read it, because it's really small, and I don't have it on my screen.
Two sixty-one, two sixty, and two fifty-nine. It's on the corner, like backing up to the retention. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, but, but the way the. Oh, wait a minute, maybe I do have a thingy. Hold on.
That's the old.
That's the old.
Yeah. Okay, so two eighty-one, two eighty, and two, or maybe it's two sixty-one.
I think it's fifty.
Fifty-nine. It's those three parcels right there. So does not, two eighty-two or whatever is above there?
Two sixty-two.
Two sixty-two. So does the side of two sixty-two or the back of those other ones look at the side of two sixty-two? I mean, how much room is between that cluster of homes?
Not many, not much.
I, I would, you know, I mean, you've got one house, and then you've got two and a half houses.
So two sixty-two, that would be a hundred and twenty feet deep. Two sixty-one would be fifty-five, the others would be forty-five, so.
I mean, in, in other corners, you'd had, you'd made like some pie-shaped lots to make that, so it wasn't so close together.
Do, do you have the, um, or does the, do the conditions address front, side, yard setbacks and back, rear yard setbacks?
They will, obviously, the homes when they're constructed would have to meet the rear setback, which would be fifteen foot for, for this tract.
And what would be the side yard setback?
They're on page forty-six of our.
And remember, these are extra-deep lots again. They're one to ten.
So the minimum lot width would be forty-five, the minimum lot depth would be one hundred and twenty. And then the setbacks would be fifteen foot on the rear. I, I, but I don't know that, I guess your concern is just that you have several backyards facing the side yard.
Well, yeah, especially if they put up a fence. I mean, unless they all have to put it at fifteen feet in. I mean, if that was the side of my house, I would not enjoy looking at the backs of two and a half other houses within the side of my house or my lot. That's just me.
You have the same situation on the cul-de-sac up there, too.
Mm-hmm, you do. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Perhaps I should continue. I, I, let me briefly cover transportation and concurrency, and then what we can do is, if, if necessary, we can have continued conversations about the site development plan. Would, would that be acceptable to the board? Thank you. So again, as it relates to transportation and concurrency, the proposed PUD modification will include PUD's overall trip generation by nine hundred and forty-four daily trips and ninety-nine PM peak hour trips. Uh, however, uh, it's important that a binding concurrency determination uh will need to be made in advance of final development approval. And again, that's during the subdivision review process. Uh, that will include a major traffic study, which will be required for the entire three hundred and twenty-one single-family dwelling unit development uh prior to the first plat and construction plans submitted. In addition, uh, as it relates to school concurrency, on October seventh, twenty twenty-one, the Polk County School Board provided a finding of adequate capacity for the overall three hundred and twenty-one single-family units proposed for this residential development. That, of course, is subject to the developer meeting the conditions and timelines contained in that letter. So that would be down the road. If you have any further questions regarding transportation or concurrency, Chuck Barnby is here, and he's available for that. Uh, do you have any questions regarding that at this time?
Just one. Sorry, Chuck. As far as the um, traffic study, is that incorporating the future buildup in the track, wherever that is to the north?
Um, at this point, we would, we would only, um, we would restrict the major traffic state to the three hundred and twenty-one um units. Now, if any of the other phases are ahead in the queue, then that traffic would be factored into the study. Likewise, if this is ahead, the other studies would have to factor in that, that same traffic. One of the issues we've run into during COVID is that the volumes, the background volumes out here are somewhat depressed, because GEICO's not operating at full capacity, and they're a big uh driver of traffic. The other issue also is that with the um construction of the public shopping center at County Line Road, there is going to be a shift in distribution of residential traffic in this area. So we wanted to frankly buy a little bit of time for traffic to normalize, and also to see how the, the distribution adjusts with the new retail to the west of this site.
Has there been any more talk about the traffic light at Medulla and Pipkin?
The, the, the traffic light at Medulla and Pipkin is uh court, being coordinated between the developer of Riverstone and Polk County. You know, of course, the county, the county widening project that we were talking about with the previous item, uh, the western end of that is at Medulla Road at that intersection. And so the developer of Riverstone has posted, uh, I think it's right around a five-hundred-thousand-dollar bond to uh provide a financial guarantee for that traffic signal. But in terms of the timing, that's being worked out uh as part of the construction of that, of that forelining project. But that is something that is still a, a requirement of Riverstone. That financial guarantee has been posted, and that coordination's underway right now.
And is there, in that portion of Pipkin where this is exiting, is that, is there, is there a center median there? Or, I mean, what I'm saying is, is there ability to do left-turn lanes out of this subdivision to go east?
Uh, there will be. In fact, um, this, the main access road shown between tracks B and C will align with a spine road being developed as part of the Hawthorne Ranch project directly on the south side of, across Pipkin Road. That project, you know, we're currently reviewing the first one hundred and eighty-three single-family lots of an overall development that's somewhere between twelve and thirteen hundred units. There will be a separate, separate development agreement that will be coming forward uh for city commission approval, probably in December or January, to nail down the timing and, and the, and the requirements of, of that developer. But this is, will be a four-way intersection that at some point in time, you know, will be signalized.
Yeah, I'd hate to see it end up being like it is with Hallam Preserve coming out on five forty-eight. That there's just a break in the median, and it's just a cluster all the time.
And, and that's part of what we've tried to do over the years, is establish an access management plan for Pipkin Road, where we don't have full median openings uh, you know, at very many locations, and where we do try to set it up for signalizations. So that's, that's definitely the intent, ten here, and the full expectation is, is this will need to be signalized at some point in time.
Have they considered installing any of the Michigan lifts that the turn, either should turn right, come out, and go around the median?
We're, we're starting to see more of those jug handles on, on the state system. I think the only one we have at Polk County is up at five fifty-nine and I four. But that is something that DOT is looking at on its system. Uh, but that's really if you've got a very heavy uh truck movement or a very heavy left-turn movement. We really don't have that here yet. Um, I think the standard signalization would be what the county would, would ultimately end, end up approving. We're also looking at roundabouts and some other, other types of treatments, but the, the Michigan, the Michigan jug handle uh is something that is being done sporadically around our area, and, and that is an option for other locations, but not, not necessarily here.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. So in conclusion, uh, the Community Economic Development Department reviewed this request uh for consistency with the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, and uh we are recommending approval of this application of, of, of PUD zoning. Letters of notification were mailed to one hundred and fifty properties, uh property owners, excuse me, within five hundred feet of the subject property. Uh, and in addition to the comments that were expressed at the public hearing last month, we received uh seven emails, six phone calls, and one letter. Uh, primarily, these were concerning um stormwater retention, buffering, uh the minimum size of the lots and the homes. Uh, the usage, again, as, as mentioned during last month's meeting, uh of the existing amenities and concerns regarding that by existing residents, as well as the new residents within tracks B and C. And questions as to whether or not the new project would have a separate homeowners association. So with that, there were a number of changes to the conditions of approval, primarily as it relates to breaking out the tracks. If you would like, I can read every change into the record, or if not, I can just summarize those. What would you prefer?
Your opinion on anybody on the board?
You can summarize this, right? Yeah.
Sure. So, in section C, you'll, you'll note that uh now reflects that tract A will have one hundred and thirty-three dwelling units. Tracks B and C will have three hundred and twenty-one dwelling units. Uh, within tracks B and C, the minimum lot dimensions shall be as follows. A minimum lot width of forty-five feet, minimum lot depth of one hundred and twenty feet, a minimum lot area of fifty-four hundred square foot. Uh, and for corner lots, it'll be a minimum width of fifty-five feet, a minimum depth of one hundred and twenty feet, and then a minimum lot area of six thousand six hundred square foot. Underneath the development standard subsection E, there were some changes, again, as it relates to uh breaking out B and C from existing tracks. There is also the allowance uh for the Director of Community Development to approve minor modifications. I'm sorry, this is under subsection or section, excuse me, F, formerly G. Um, this is standard for all of our residential subdivisions, our PUDs. Um, under the new section G, you'll note that tracks B and C, recreation and civic open space shall be provided in accordance with subsection three point four point six of the Land Development Code. And that's depicted in attachment C one C, which is that new site development plan. Uh, on the, on the parcel identified as recreation area, clubhouse amenity center shall be constructed prior to the plating of the one hundred and sixty-ninth lot. Under section K, within tracks B and C, this sidewalk bicycle path shall connect to the West Pipkin Road sidewalk and west end of the internal collector road, and be placed within a separate twenty-foot-wide parcel that is owned and maintained by the HOA. Under the new section N, road improvements, again, that's language regarding tracks B and C, and a reference to the major traffic study being required. There was also some additional language there as it relates to uh the requirements uh during subdivision review. New section P is in regards to the navigation agreement. Um, and that will have to be recorded with the Polk County Clerk courts prior to the plating of any phase. So, section R, uh binding concurrency determination shall be made at the time of each plat approval. And then section S is in regards to the stormwater management language that I referred to earlier. Uh, and this will exceed what the minimum standards are, because it will require uh that they be designed to retain the difference in pre and post-development runoff volumes from a one-hundred-year, twenty-four-hour storm event. Section T is in regards to the buffering. I would like to read those into the record. The existing row of oak trees located along the west perimeter project boundary shall be retained as a natural vegetative buffer and maintained by homeowners association. If located on individual lots, the natural buffer shall be protected through the recording of an easement agreement within the homeowners association. And then subsection two there, along the West Pipkin Road frontage, uniform buffer consisting of a minimum six-foot-high decorative metal fence or masonry wall, and a seven-and-a-half-foot landscaping planning strip consisting of a uniform hedge and a minimum of four type B trees per one hundred linear feet of, or fraction of, shall be constructed prior to the initial plat and construction plans submitted. A cross-section shall be provided to city staff showing the proposed wall or fence and associated landscaping along the street side of the structures. Section U, land zone by the city of Lakeland. Prior to construction plan approval, the developer shall obtain ownership of the stormwater ponds and floodplain compensation areas associated with the West Pipkin Road extension project, and shall include notes on the plat. associated with the West Pipkin Road extension project and shall include notes on the plat requiring maintenance and certification by the HOA and drainage easements being granted to Polk County as operator of West Pipkin Road. Section V is new, that is in regards to utility and bicycle pedestrian access easements being granted to the city and the county as necessary. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
I have a comment on how we could probably modify the, under the buffering, number one. Could we require a certain opacity amount of existing vegetation and if that's not met that we require a fence, like an eighty percent opacity from the, because I'm worried about that underbrush being cleared out and then that opens up that buffer so that there isn't any protection to that neighbor.
We could consider that I would ask if the applicant would want to speak to that requirement, if a fence were to be added?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Vice Chair. John Hall, five one two one, South Lakeland Drive, for the record. We intend to keep that row of live oaks in their current condition, which would mean that we're not going into clean under those either. And you can see what the canopy distance is. We do not intend to cut those canopies. So whatever that buffer is going to end up being and what does that look like? The row of trees plus maybe ten, fifteen feet. And then the undergrowth, we would either leave it as it is in its natural state or improve it, meaning that we would put something else in there to provide a visual buffer. And that's just as important to our new residents as it would be to, I think it's Mr. Peebles that owns the property to the west. So it would be just as important to us as it would be to him.
But you understand my concern of like the representation on the plan of it showing just like a five-foot buffer and then the actual buffer, it looks like it's two to three fence lengths. It's, there's a discrepancy there. So either the, like that lot owner is going to go in and clear out part of their lot?
Well, is that a five-foot buffer or a fifteen-foot buffer? I don't know.
It's not indicated.
It's a five, okay. Whatever it is, during the planned submittal, we'll work with the staff at the city, same way that we have since our last meeting here, to make sure that an adequate buffer is retained or enhanced.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Is this homeowners' association intended to be commingled with that of Morgan Creek?
No, ma'am. What happens is if this commission and the city commission subsequently approves this, Morgan Creek Preserve will be truncated at the eastern boundary of this association and the western boundary of Morgan Creek. They will then become their own association standalone. Now, I know that you have received a letter and it's about management of Morgan Creek or some portion of it was. We intend to turn Morgan Creek over to the residents for their own management, following all of the guidelines. That means if this board approves it and then the city commission approves it, twenty days after the city commission approval, because there's an appeal timeline in there. So twenty days after the city commission approval, we start a ninety-day clock ticking. And the developer has already reached out to a professional that does management turnover from developer to the membership. So that's going to happen.
So that previous requirement of ninety percent of all, of all, not be sold or whatever this is.
That is still in effect and assuming that we get a favorable vote from this board, that actually triggers that ninety percent because there's one hundred and thirty-three approved lots in A or Phase One of Morgan Creek. And a hundred and thirty of those have been transferred to membership ownership. So it triggers that ninety percent. So there is no way that we can't turn it over. It has to be. There was a couple of other things you just want me to go ahead and address those while I'm here. One of those was rear yard setbacks. What is in the requirements is a forty-five percent impervious surface ratio. That means that the most that we could have as a house in there, a home, would be twenty-two hundred square feet. The lots are actually ten feet deeper than the previous lots that were approved over in Morgan Creek Phase One. Those were a hundred and ten feet, these were a hundred and twenty feet. So we have that ten-foot additional. We do not foresee anyone building any farther back on their lot because that just would not make the community look good, the association look good. So all of those home fronts are going to be somewhere close to the same, which will give a very large area in the backyard, plus a side yard setback of five feet. So there's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five feet or so between those. And you get into a similar situation in the other homes that were a hundred and ten feet. If they back up to each other, you don't have very much more than that because of the size of the homes and the setbacks there, about forty-five feet. So that's the rear yard setback in those lots that you were concerned about. Signalization was mentioned. We have, we've had that preliminary discussion with the city staff and they have recommended that we get with the developers of Hawthorne Mills and come to an agreement or reach an agreement on how are we going to signalize that intersection and what participation each member would have. We have three hundred and twenty-one lots that we're proposing. They have thirteen hundred roughly. So what would be the appropriate share for Gresham Trails on signalization of that intersection so that we have a smooth traffic flow? I think we've already talked about the buffering. We will make sure that that buffer is there, either with the natural or enhanced if necessary. The, there's been some question about the size of homes and are these going to be starter homes? They are not. They're in all probability going to be at least as large or larger than the, some of the homes in Phase One of Morgan Creek. Over fifty percent of the homes in Morgan Creek are smaller homes. That's the Lathloa Loop. There are sixty-seven lots over there out of the one hundred and thirty-three lots total. So they are smaller than those homes that are in the estate side. In all probability, what we envision here and the people that we have talked to already is that these homes will actually be that size or exceed that size. So these are, will not be starter homes. The vision is that these homes will be in that three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar price range, not considered starter homes. There was a question or a concern about amenities. When we, when we cut this off to the west, it will have its own amenities. You heard that from the city staff and they will, I'm sure, hold our feet to the fire on the amenities. It will have its own clubhouse, its own pool, its own totlot. It will have a walking trail or a biking trail that actually is as good or better than Morgan Creek Phase One. And that comes from working with the city staff over the period of time since we last met. I've got other notes, but I would rather, if you have questions, not take up any more of your time. I know you had a long item earlier, so I'll just answer your question. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Hall, on this plot plan here, just to the east of the entrance, it has future residence, future RES. Is that, what is your intention to use that lot, that space for?
Oh, well, there's been several different discussions. That could be future residential. If it is, it would have to come back to this board for approval. It could be some type of park system. It could be several different things. But it is a little over two acres that has been out and we just didn't put the residential in there right now, but in all probability, that's what it will be. But that will be sometime in the future and it'll have to come back to this board.
You made a comment, the smallest homes in this redevelopment will be no smaller than in all probability than what you have in the small homes in the existing Morgan Creek development. Is there any way you can commit to a minimum size for these homes?
That is absolutely correct. The smallest home in Morgan Creek Phase One is fifteen hundred and twelve feet, one thousand five hundred and twelve. We envision all of these homes being not to that level. They'll be above that level and can go up by your ISR to twenty-two hundred square feet if we were to maximize that forty-five percent impervious surface ratio. But, and that's just on the footprint. There will be some homes in there that are going to be two-story that will have a larger square footage when you consider the upper story. But you're absolutely correct. Nothing will be smaller than any home that is, well, not any, nothing will be smaller than the smallest home that is built in Phase One of Morgan Creek.
I've got some questions. There's, I think you addressed it, but there's a question about the clubhouse amenity and how that would work. I know there was some comments at the previous meeting about access to, is the intent that the clubhouse would just be for those parcels in tracks B and C and not for track A?
Absolutely. The amenities that are in track A will be track A amenities. That already has a clubhouse, cabana, pool, tennis courts, totlot and basketball court. Those will be for Morgan Creek, assuming that there's going to be some friendships that are going to develop and some of these people may be invited over and conversely, some of the Morgan Creek Preserve children may be invited over, you know. But as a general rule, yes. The only people that will be using the Morgan Creek facilities are Morgan Creek. The only people that will be using Gresham Trails facilities are Gresham Trails residents or they're the invitees on either side.
And then just to confirm, some of the language here indicates that the clubhouse amenity center will be constructed prior to the plating of the one hundred and sixty-ninth lot. Is that of the combined track B and C only?
Yes, sir. That is, when we start the construction of B and C, prior to plating of the one hundred and sixty-ninth lot, then the amenity center will be built.
And then in the language on the original track A, there was a minimum square footage associated with that community center. Is there any discussion of what the size will be for this track B and C community center?
Well, actually, the minimum square footage was in reference to the lot size, the sixty-five thousand square feet is the lot size that it was going to be built on. What was initially planned for this phase, when it was part of Morgan Creek, was an additional twenty thousand square feet, but the planned amenity center is greater than that twenty thousand square feet.
The location of the cement center is on that roundabout?
Just to the northwest of the roundabout, yes.
I see you have proposed some parking on the south side of that as well. Is that intended for that community center or is that just extra parking?
Well, that's parking for use of the amenities there at night when the amenities are not in use because the pools close down at night. Then if someone had a guest or something and they wanted to utilize that parking, then they could.
And then that community center, would that be owned and operated by the HOA?
Yes, it would.
I think last time you were here, you talked about lot size. I think it was originally proposed at forty, I think a couple of us on this board indicated that seemed a little small. It looks like it has been pushed up to forty-five, fifty-five. But at the time, I think you had a little bit different price point and indication of the size of homes and who would be your target audience on this. It seems as though you're saying they're not going to be starter homes, likely in the three hundred range. I guess my question back to you is, okay, if that is the case, why the smaller lots still? It indicated, you know, need for lesser sized lots for people to take care of, not so big a deal. Now you're saying in a higher price point, we're still here at the lower lot size.
Right. Well, there's going to be a couple of things. The smaller lot size was going to give you a minimum on the side yard setbacks and I think that you were concerned about that or one of the board members. But since we left, what we did is went out and took a look at the lots and Fishhawk actually has some really good homes that are excellent examples of forty-five foot lots. So that's what we had, went back and working with the city staff, taking a look at those, that's what we have come up with. So there, on some of the smaller homes, it may not reach that three hundred thousand threshold, but on the, on the larger homes, which is what we're envisioning here, we're not, we're not planning on coming in and building a full subdivision of fifteen hundred square foot homes. So actually, they're going to be nicer than that. We envision building a subdivision with the young professional in mind is what we're doing. So there's been some changes since we left. Yes, sir, there has, but we've made those changes in consultation with the city staff and working through all of that to make sure that we meet all of the requirements. We heard the board the last time that we were here, worked with the city staff and this is what we have, we have come up with as a resubmittal.
Did you get any additional information or discussions on that?
I guess it'd be good to hear what the feedback was from Fishhawk. I know they have a lot of other amenities, sidewalks through the neighborhoods, rear parking, things of that nature. Were those things considered in terms of the comparisons?
No, in fact, at the staff level, I don't know that we were aware of the visit to Fishhawk. I think how we looked at this, and Matt can jump in because I know he had quite a bit of discussion with the applicant, was the fact that at forty-five feet, you still achieved an overall lot size, lot area that was similar to what's already within track A. So fifty-five hundred square feet versus the fifty-four hundred square feet and knowing that there was additional rear yard area to provide that open space that would be, may be required by or desired by some of the homeowners. But no, we did not talk about rear loaded lots or alleys as a way to mitigate for the smaller lots.
Yeah, I did look at the forty-five foot product in Fishhawk there and that actually was not rear loaded. I believe Polk was the builder there and they said maybe like the higher end quality there. I mean, there's no guarantee that Polk will be the builder here, but I believe they are one of the builders on consideration. So that's really what they're kind of aiming for there. And all this is really being driven by changes in the market over the last fifteen years. Fifteen years ago, everyone wanted fifties, but as time has gone on, the cost of developing land, particularly infrastructure, concrete, all the utilities, everything, it's gotten more expensive. So there's market forces that are driving this trend here and we're trying to find some sort of balance there between them. And I believe also the developer believe also the developer, it's just going to be funded with a CDD, so that they need a certain threshold number of units to make that work. Maybe Mr. Hall can speak about that. But that was my understanding, is the rationale for what they're asking for today.
Go ahead.
Yes, and you had mentioned trails in Fishhawk, yes. And we have had some discussion on that. We will plan on addressing that when we make the construction plans submittal, and the staff has an opportunity to review that, because they have asked for that trail also, so to get through this community. So, I think that your concerns will be addressed when we submit the next level of drawings.
I think this is the first time I heard about the CDD.
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 Yeah.
That's, yeah.
What's the intended impact cost of that monthly?
Oh, well, I'm not even sure that that's going to be done, but there is, depends upon what the amount would be. I don't think, based on some of the construct, or some of the discussion that has been going on lately, that CDD will take place. I think that there are some more interest that will not have a CDD in place. That's what I think at this point in time, based on the people that we've been talking to.
You have a question?
Mr. Chair, we may want to open it up for public comments, since we've heard some new information, and we've also heard from the applicant. So, I don't know if there's any folks here that want to make public comment, but I would recommend that we open it up for that.
And if, Mr. Chair, I'd like to reserve any rebuttal if there's something I hear listening.
Yes.
Hey, my name is Dennis Michael Apgar, address 3119 Bogart Boulevard West, and I am an urban planning student. I have concerns about the welfare of wildlife in this area that relies on this ecosystem where this development is to be built. The last, yeah. It should, I recommend it become a wildlife reserve owned by either the city or the county. And that, because the last thing we need is more development, deforestation is a major problem in Florida right now, especially when you go towards Orlando and eastern Polk County. And, you know, the last thing we need is more suburban homes developed on natural land to cater to northeastern immigrants. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just about tripped. That would have been really embarrassing. My name is Michael Peoples. I live at 4485 McEnopie Crescent Drive, which is on the east side of this project. And I also own the piece of property to the west side of this project, so I neighbor it on both sides. Current resident of Morgan Creek, obviously. Great neighborhood, great people. Want to talk about two things, if I may. I think Leigh Anne brought it up earlier. Right now, that existing canopy that's along the western boundary is existing oaks. I'm not even sure whose property they're on, if they're on mine, or if they're on the applicant's. But the canopy starts at 20 feet tall. So, you know, when they're talking about a natural quote-unquote buffer, if you look at this from west to east, you see right under the trees. And if you could pull up the existing PUD site plan? Is this a binding site plan, right now?
Yes.
Okay. So, all I'm asking for is, since it's a binding site plan, to just show a buffer similar to the existing binding site plan in the new site plan, versus we'll work in the construction plan approval to save some trees that they may not own. Is that a problem for anyone?
Did you have a, like a minimum with in mind, and any other features?
Whatever that is. I'm not asking for anything more than's already in place. I'm not trying to, like, change it on the developer, and therefore, I wouldn't really like the developer to change it. I mean, that seems to make sense in my mind.
I would just suggest keep your, because you got a time limit, and the applicant's going to come back up and offer rebuttal, and they can, they can speak to that.
I love Leigh Anne's comment as a compromise. If there's 80% that you can see through, then put a fence up. So, anyway, that was number one. Number two, it's great to hear there's turnover for the HOA. That's a good thing, I think, for the existing HOA. However, I would say that the current recreational facilities that are in Phase One of Morgan Creek are not currently owned by the HOA. So, just so you know, that facility was deeded back to the developer after plating, and now they are charging the residents rent for their existing facilities after people like myself bought into the community with a facility that was owned by the HOA. So, I would like to know if the developer intends to return those assets to the existing HOA at turnover. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Anybody else in the audience?
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, I'll take these in reverse order, because the last thing will be quickest for me. I can't tell you what the developer has in mind for those facilities. And it has not been discussed in any detail, so that will be on the developer. I can tell you that it is not uncommon to have developer-owned facilities, or facilities that are owned by someone else. I actually manage a homeowner association that has someone that owns the other facility. So, it's not uncommon. As far as the canopy, that conceptual site plan is just that. It's a conceptual site plan, and the only thing that is pretty much delineated as far as size are the lots. And what I said here is that we will work with the city staff, and Mr. Peoples had been tempted to be contacted by the developer and did not return that call. So, he still has that opportunity to contact the developer and work with him to say, okay, what's reasonable? In the absence of that, we'll work with the city staff during that construction plan submittal, and make sure that we have an adequate buffer. If we have to add plants, we will do that, to make sure that there is a visual buffer between the two communities.
Would you object to putting it in the conditions?
Pardon me?
Would you object to putting that in the conditions?
At what size? I don't object to putting in a condition, because it's, but what we need is a reasonable size on that buffer.
Would it be helpful to just state that there should be a buffer that contains the existing vegetation and/or combination of additional vegetation, so that it achieves 90% view blockage within a certain amount of time, at a certain height? So, I'm going to look to the landscape architect to give me some help on that, like what you, you know. Because I would like to leave it open that it can be vegetation rather than fence wall, because that may impact the trees as well.
Right. I don't see putting a wall back there. That wouldn't be smart for those existing live oaks. I would probably, I like the replacing it with vegetation that achieves a certain opacity in three years, two years.
Do we actually know whose property that vegetation is on? Wasn't that a comment that was made? They really weren't sure exactly where it was?
And that was part of the challenge, is not having a tree survey at this phase of the development process. So, when they come in for subdivision plan review, actually, their construction plans, they'll be required to submit a tree survey. I think we're just, you know, we're guessing based on, you know, the street views, and also the plan views, that they are on the subject property, but they could be just as well on the adjacent property. If you put in a seven-gallon, say, verbenum, it would grow to six feet in the three-year timeframe, which would be sufficient. And that's not a huge investment on the developer's end.
So, just a landscape buffer achieving a height of six feet and 90% view blockage within three years?
Yes.
Is that, but to still maintain the trees that are within that buffer?
Correct.
Yes. That's acceptable. Okay, so that will be put in as a condition. Any other questions or comments?
I guess my only other thought on that is the added language indicates that if they're on individual lots, the natural buffer shall be protected through an easement. Is there any possibility of not overlapping the buffer with a parcel, so as not to jeopardize those trees getting chopped down?
Sure. If you take a look, and there was some concern, and I think Ms. Lawns had said there's a five-foot easement in there. So, they can't do anything in that five-foot easement anyway. So, anything, we can protect any plants that we put in that easement.
Yeah, I guess the point is visually, it looks a lot more than five feet. So, based on this language, we would say that there'd need to be an easement on private property. My request is that there not be an overlap, and not a need for an easement.
Okay, we can look at that. And that would be a landscape buffer easement, or just a separate tract of property. Thank you.
I know the developer, they're trying to avoid losing those two lots at the end there, but I mean, that may be a very real possibility. Would they be able to possibly make the list up elsewhere in the site? Do they have to eliminate those two lots at the end?
Say that again, please.
If they have to remove those two lots...
It's really just one.
Just one lot, I guess, I guess what we're showing. Would they be able to possibly recover that elsewhere within track B and C?
Okay, the table is...
Which lot number is it?
Forty-one.
It's possible, and I think that falls within the purview of the city staff for minor alterations to this site plan. But, yes, I think that we would take a look at that.
I mean, to ensure that, would it be that much of an impact issue for you to just lose Lot 41, to ensure that happening? I mean, you've got 300-plus lots, so.
South side, left of the coal side.
Okay, I see it. I would rather make a commitment to you that we will do what is necessary for the buffering there. And the, we already have identified a green buffering zone, and that is not a part of an easement to the property. So, I think that we will make that commitment, that yes, there will be a buffer in there, so that it, the property to the west will not be adversely impacted. And we'll plant the trees that Ms. Lawns had indicated should be adequate.
Any other questions? Correct me if I'm wrong. At this point, we're going to for everything back to the staff. We're not going to, we're not, there's no approval to be done at this point.
No, we are asking for approval, at this point, for the staff recommendation with the revised buffer condition, as discussed.
That's it, there are no other conditions, there are no other items that need to be addressed from the staff and Mr. Hall. Is that correct?
As far as the zoning conditions, no.
Okay. Then is there a motion to...
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Before we move into entertaining motions. I know there was some back and forth about what we can and can't require of the developer and HOA and things of that nature. Was there any result based on previous interactions from the last meeting?
Well, I did research conditions to be imposed through a zoning process related to the operation of the HOA. And I wasn't able to find any case law adjudicating that question either way. So, I think it's kind of an open question as to whether or not this board could impose a condition related to the operation of the HOA. What I do know is there's a statute that lays out those processes, and it gives homeowners of an avenue to dispute those operations and the management. And so, there seems to be another process available for homeowners to sort those issues out. And our code has a criteria related to maintenance of the common areas, and it says that we can impose conditions to ensure that there's a feasible program for maintenance. That term feasible is, I guess, could be interpreted broadly to allow the board to consider the operations of the HOA. How far into that this board could go is, like I said, unclear. I wasn't able to find any authority either way. And in situations like that, I just always advise caution to the board. There's, like I said, there's a statute in place. There's a process in place for homeowners to dispute those things. So, for this board to delve deeply into that, I think is not necessarily appropriate, only to the extent that it's related to whether or not their program for maintenance is going to be feasible. That's really, I think, the only consideration for the board.
So, we can't mandate anything about, or put a provision, anything about ownership of those facilities? They must stay with the homeowners' association?
I think that theoretically you could, as long as it was related to this board determining that that would be necessary in order for the maintenance to be feasible. They're not going to be abandoned, or end up, you know.
Transferred off, and then leased back, and you're charging them to use something that they've already paid for.
Right. Getting into those kinds of things, it's going to be kind of tricky. I don't know how we would, you know, word those kinds of conditions to enforce them.
Would that have to be more for a court of law to decide?
That's what I was going to say, is just to think about functionally, what comes out of this process that the city then has. Once the PUD is adopted, we have this site plan that they're required to develop according to. And if they fail to do it, then we take them to the code enforcement board, and we have to present to that code enforcement board why they're not in compliance with the site plan or the conditions of that site plan. So, that's really where this process, the next step for this process, when the developer doesn't live up to the conditions that are imposed by this, ultimately, this city commission, based on the recommendation of this board. So, it would be just trying to think through what kind of condition related to the ownership, and then the city trying to prosecute that in front of a code enforcement board would be very unusual, from my experience and what I've seen at the code enforcement board, and trying to enforce site plan-based zoning restrictions like this. We don't typically get into those kinds of things. Now, if the common areas were dilapidated, and they weren't, you know, they were becoming blight, then, you know, those are the kinds of things that are more commonly presented to the code board. Whether or not they failed to turn over the HOA, or something like that, would be probably more appropriate for a court of law under the statutes that govern the operations of HOA, as opposed to a code enforcement. under the statutes that govern the operations of HOA as opposed to a, a code enforcement board trying to enforce the site plan.
Guess my last question to you is about the, uh, the clubhouse center. Uh, I know there's a, a requirement that it has to be constructed prior to the plating of one hundred and sixty-ninth lot. Um, what, uh, what mechanism would the city have to say, hey, this wasn't met, you need to go build something? Is it, do we have that authority? What, what would be the nexus to that? And I only ask this question because there's a hundred and sixty-eight lots on one side of this development. So theoretically, they could build out one side and not have to build this until tracks B starts under development.
And what our, the staff concern was is that they potentially could even get beyond that one hundred and sixty-eight unit into, you know, the second phase and not have built anything. So we wanted to make sure, at least with that first phase, that there would be an amenity center, um, in place prior to them proceeding to the second phase. So it's basically at the time that they would come in to do subdivision plan review for anything over the one sixty-eight that we would look at the plan and say, if there's not an amenity center there, it wouldn't get approved.
Is that... Cause I didn't interpret it that way. Is that the way that the language is written in G three? That was the purpose of my, my question. Is that specific to B and C?
Joshua, are you able to put the conditions on the screen?
So they, so yes, they can build one hundred and sixty-eight units without having to build the amenity center.
And that's specific to B and C, so if they were to have that northern track open up and...
Oh, I see what you're saying now, so that...
There's no nexus to combining the two.
Well, then there's a condition dealing with tract F to the north.
That's tract E, actually.
Tract E and transportation.
Tract E does not currently have any entitlements.
Correct. So they have to come back to modify the PUD for any development within tract E.
So would there be any staff recommendation to maybe emphasize the point of the construction of that clubhouse based on our conversation?
Even prior to tract E?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um... We could just add in there tracks B, C, and E. But then it's not, it's not showing anything for tract E. Um, let's see.
Or just put as a condition of approval of tract E at the end of that's last statement? Again, I don't, I, I, I want to avoid, cause it appears as though there were significant concerns from the original development that there was commitments made that weren't followed through, uh, and while it might not have been the intent or, um, you know, the perception from the developer, um, I just don't want there to be language that provides a, an out per se.
If we, if this developer were to, uh, develop tract D, we would still have to bring that back to this commission.
Sure.
And, and there could be, uh, uh, conditions that you put on that construction also. So, yes, tract D will not use the amenity center in Morgan Creek Preserve, Phase One. It will use the amenity center if it is developed by this, um, developer.
But we don't, we don't have that language here, right? So we're gonna go based off of an assumption of today's development. Things could change tomorrow. So in my opinion, I'd like to have something written as a condition that satisfies this board's need today, uh, because it could be a completely different board, uh, anyhow.
We would, we would not be opposed to, uh, that condition if it is stated, if this developer moves forward to develop tract E, then those residents will use the amenity center in tracks B and C and not the amenity center in the first phase of Morgan Creek Preserve. The whole intent of this is that Morgan Creek Preserve now is a standalone community.
Sure. Yeah, and, and I, I, again, the use of facilities isn't really where I'm, I'm getting at. It's the, when this actually gets constructed and what is it associated with? B, C, F?
Uh, I think that it is, uh, um, associated with the number of units at one sixty-eight. Uh, because that one hundred and sixty-ninth unit, no matter if it's in, uh, C or E.
Doesn't say E based on these conditions.
I understand, but we couldn't, that's where the board would then have an opportunity in the future because we would have to come back here and, and you could say, we're not gonna approve this unless you build that amenity center.
But, but again, that intent, to me, should be in here.
And, and, and that's okay with us. And it should apply whether it's the same developer or if another developer comes in, that must be a condition that development, that new developer needs to meet. Yes.
So I, I think it can be handled by it reading tracks B, C, and E. Need to provide recreational space then either in accordance with the land development code, cause we have a minimum amount of open space per the number of units. Or as shown on attachment C one C, which deals just with tracks B and C.
And then I'd, I'd like to take it even a step further, knowing some of the issues in track A where the developers held on to some parcels, uh, and not, not given up whatever. Uh, and almost take it back to ninety percent. Instead of the one hundred and sixty-ninth, which is the very last parcel in that one development, um, I, I'd like to see that number reduced so you don't just build the whole thing and not have the center.
I agree with you. I think it should be, you know, a hundred, the first hundred. Those people are buying based on having that community center. And I think that it should be much sooner than having you, having one section finished before it's done. I think it should be cut back to maybe a hundred, first hundred. It's an arbitrary number.
I don't know if the staff has any recommendation on any number, but I, I would tend to agree it should be less than.
And it's not dependent on the sale of any, in any other tract? Cause that was the impression I had from what I read.
It would just be for B and C. That's what he's developing now, yeah.
Yeah, so that shouldn't have any effect on A.
Right. Just, it, yes, within B and C.
Well, the issue is, I mean, the plating, they're gonna plow that whole phase at once. I mean, that, that's the actual recording of the lots. They're not gonna just record part of that, that phase. I mean, so that's why we kind of tried to tie it to phasing is what, what staff was thinking.
So when they, when they start the hundredth house, they have to have that community center done, is that...
I mean, you could say prior to the issuance of the...
Certificate of Occupancy.
Or a hundred building permit for, or, I mean, that would maybe another way though.
Yeah.
But that's something, um, as far as tracking, um, you know, how, how we would, you know, all that, but that, that, that would be, uh...
It's easier to make the trigger at the time of subdivision plat review to make sure that it doesn't get lost as permits are being issued beyond that plat approval.
Here's my reason for saying that. I happen to live in a community where a recreational facility was planned and the developer vacated the plating. We never got the recreational facility. After he built fifty homes or something.
It may also be worth noting that prior to, whether or not you choose to modify the condition prior to it being recorded, the, the planning and zoning board does have a role in reviewing the plat. So any plat that comes out of this after construction plan approval and infrastructure, uh, i- is, is in place, you will see. So certainly you would have an opportunity at that point, if this condition weren't being met, to deny approval of that plat. And then it could not be recorded.
I'd still shoot for, um, reducing that number just to ensure that...
That it really, that it really happens.
Um, I just, if I may chime in, just, we've had some discussions of various conditions. Um, I, Theresa, do you want to clarify just what the staff recommendation is at this point?
Yes, please.
The, the staff recommendation is as written unless the board...
What it's, what it's devolved to.
Well, I didn't...
Decide that they want to amend, but I could, you want me to try and verbalize what they've been discussing in a revised condition?
Well, I didn't know you were, it seemed to be you were accepting one of the, the suggestions from one of the board members at, at least to modify the, one of those conditions. So I just, I don't know if you want to clarify it?
Yes, so we were talking about condition G three. And so based on the board discussions, that would be revised to read tracks B, C, and E. Um, recreational and civic open space shall be provided in accordance with subsection three point four six of the land development code and as shown on attachment C dash one C. On the parcel identified as recreation area, a clubhouse amenity center shall be constructed prior to the plating of the one hundredth lot.
Can we say and permitting of the one hundredth lot?
They can't permit unless they have the plat approved.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I, I would suggest, um, prior to the plating of the one hundred and sixty-ninth lot or the issuance of the hundred and first building permit for a single family dwelling. So that would kind of cover both possibilities, so I, I just, I think that the plating, we have to, again, they're gonna do the whole phase at once. They're not just gonna put in part of it. And then that's gonna be kind of a little more, would, would you agree, Joshua? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to think from the subdivision review process, what, which would work better? Chuck?
For the record, Chuck Barnby, um, you know, it sounds like that there, you know, the issue between the plating, the plating process and the permitting process and, and a lot of times the administration gets convoluted and if, you know, we got turnover of staff and turnover of technology, maybe hard to track. What if we just clarified it and just say prior to the, uh, prior to the, uh, recording of the first plat? We didn't have a number in there. It could be a hundred, it could be a hundred and sixty-nine, but prior to the recording of the first plat may provide some additional clarity and, and kind of get us out of tracking specific counts.
I agree with that. So that, that makes sense because it could be then that it's, not that they would do it, but they, most likely how this will come in is they will do a plat for one hundred and sixty-eight lots. But in the event they weren't, that would be covered under that, if it was any number less than one sixty-eight.
Yeah, the only issue there is it says it has to be constructed prior to the plating of the one hundred and sixty-ninth, so they couldn't actually build it without it, right?
Correct.
You're not happy. You're not happy with that? You're not happy?
Well, I, I don't think it's possible. I don't know if they could actually go out there and build it without, with a, with the first plat, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's not feasible either.
Right. So, yeah, we, we need a...
A number for the plat.
Or just move to the issuance of the hundredth building permit or whatever.
I, just from an administration standpoint, um, I mean, it, you know, the staff wouldn't necessarily have to track each permit and then know exactly when they hit the number. Um, it would just be that if, if the, the developer's continuing on beyond that number, whatever the board sets it as and the, and the clubhouse is not constructed, when now they're in, they're in violation of their site plan. Um, and then it would be on, incumbent on the city to, to discover that, however that would come about. I'm not sure, most likely it would be a complaint from a resident within the community. And then, um, the city would, you know, go through the process of issuing the notice that you need to have this constructed and then code enforcement. And, um, that's kind of how that would play out. It wouldn't necessarily be incumbent on the city to know, we've hit the magic number and now we need to make sure that they do this. Um, the, the city could be made aware through some other way.
And in the past also, we've been cautioned about tying zoning conditions to the issuance of building permits because the building permits are a regulatory mechanism of Florida building code and that's what's supposed to be considered in issuance of those. So we can't really deny a building permit based on a zoning condition.
But could you deny, could you deny a CO?
We've had COs triggers before, but again, that's why we're, we're going to the plat because that is something that is under the purview even of this board. And it's a, a function of zoning and land development versus building permit.
If, is there a way to make sure homeowners are made aware of what that point is where that facility must be built? And if it's a hundred lots, that's what they know. So it isn't incumbent upon the city to say, okay, this was a hundredth, we're keeping track. But if the homeowners know it, then they can come to, if they know their recourse to call, is to come to the city and say, hey, this hasn't been done.
The homeowners would not be, um, made aware of the, the zoning through the sale. When you purchase property, there's certain things that you're disclosed, but that, it's not very common that your real estate agent gives you the PUD and as you look at the conditions before you buy the property, they're not required to in, um, the plating.
But they may look at a plat which would show a, a amenity center if it's within that one hundred unit.
Right, the plat would come up in title work. I don't know if the, if the buyers are actually looking at those kinds of things. But, um, the only way that we could, you know, would be, I, I, I'm not really sure that, you know, how we could ensure that people are aware. A lot of times people buy property sight unseen and they don't, don't do a whole lot of due diligence, so. Um, I, I think the city would, as Theresa said, we, if, you know, if the application for the building permit meets all the requirements of Florida building code, we'd have to issue the permit even if that would result in a violation of their site plan. But that would be a, we'd have a separate process for trying to get them into compliance with their site plan would be through the code enforcement. Maybe we could withhold a CO. I know that the building official, um, can withhold COs for other, uh, zoning site plan violations that aren't within the building code. Um, but again, all that stuff's, does, it does seem unusual, um, from what, what I'm hearing as far as from the staff's point of view, as far as enforcing a condition like this.
Does this require more research by the staff to figure out what recourse and how it's best?
No, I think we, you know, we have a, our recommendation, and I think we still stand by this, knowing that it would at least get built within that first phase. And I don't know if the applicant wants to, you know, on the record state if the intent is to build it concurrent with that first phase then there's really no reason for that second statement here. It's just, they need to provide an amenity center.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, if you want to put a condition on it says, uh, at the, uh, the first plating, that's okay because the intent is the, is to plat the, the first one hundred and sixty-eight as a phase, okay? Before we move to the west side of that entry road. So, um, that would, that's where it is. And I think that in the discussion is why we arrived at the one sixty-nine because, uh, we could do that first phase plating and then it would require, uh, the amenity center to be constructed. If that makes sense. So if you, if you just want to say at, at the first plating, okay.
So which section do you intend to develop first? C or A?
Uh, B.
B, okay. It's B and C.
B has a hundred and sixty-eight, there are, uh, homes in it. Or home sites.
Mr. Chair, we, we have the staff recommendation. I don't think we've had a motion yet.
No, I did not. The recommendation as it stands now is the last thing that Teresa.
I have one more question. I remember in this, the prior situation that we had with section E, there was something in reference to having the homeowners be aware that, and, and of the flight path. Do we have that same problem with this?
Well, I believe that was in the, that was the condition, it was just the navigation.
I know, but this says that it gets filed with the clerk of courts. Okay, so that means it would come up in the title.
That's intent, yes.
Now, my next question is, why could this not be put in that they have to do this, so that comes up in the title? When you do the title search for the, for the owners, it says clearly in there. If you do this with the, with the flight path for the airport, why can't you do it? That they have to, that, it's in the, it's in the documents that says they have to have it built within the first hundred or.
I, I'm not aware, I just, I'm not sure what that document would be. I've never, I've never done any.
Well, yeah, where, where does this one come up then?
With the, with the navigation, it's kind of, it's not, we call it an easement. It's a little bit different than a typical easement, but, um, I just, I don't know what the, what form that document would take to notify people of this, of this condition. That's, that's all I'm. Teresa, you have any ideas for?
I'm, I'm reading the condition and just trying to figure out how to more clearly, you know, require that this, that the amenity center would get constructed with this first phase.
We're really just voting on whether we want to allow them to put three hundred and twenty-one homes, correct? So what was, what was the, the zoning before? Because it's been so long, I don't even remember. What was it, what was the original, what are we changing? From what to what?
Joshua, could, maybe you could put up the existing approved PUD. What is before you is a, is a request for a major modification of the existing PUD, which has a, a plan, what was it, how many lots on the, on what's existing?
It was a total of three hundred and fifty-five lots between A, B, and C. And now it is increasing that to a total of four hundred fifty-four lots.
But much more dense, because B and C are not the same size as A. That's what we're voting on, correct?
Smaller lots and an increase in the number of units.
I mean, if you're looking for a mechanism, I'm sure that that gets built, um, going back to what Jared said, um, can we just say it shall be constructed prior to the completion of the one hundredth dwelling unit? I mean, meaning if they, they get underway and they have a hundred homes built there, and once we get that threshold, if they haven't produced by then, it would be a violation and they could be brought to the code board for failing to construct that amenity, would that solve the problem?
That wasn't my, that wasn't my issue. It was raised by someone else.
Would that work? I mean, that, that's what I'm.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, short of somebody having to go out there and count the number of homes that are built, I mean, I don't know how you can enforce it regardless of which number you put in there. But I think that.
Because of the plat, we can withhold approval of the plat for the second phase. But if we're counting building permits getting issued, that has a greater chance of not being enforced until after, you're already at a point where you've been having to go to a code enforcement board, because someone's building a home and they're.
You're talking about, but either before or after, like, construction. With, with the plat, you've, we've get, you get it on the front end with code board.
It's, it's happened, yeah.
And, and.
And you might not get it at all.
Can you get a bond for the construction of that? And it won't be released until?
Our code mentions something about assurances in the PUD process, but I'd, I'd have to defer to the staff as far as what we've, if we've ever historically.
I just, it was just another thought that popped into my head ago.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think, I think the plat's the best way to go, and it's the easiest to manage, and you're able to withhold a whole second phase.
And the, and if you add E into that header, and withhold any platting of on track E?
Yeah, I, I'd still recommend maybe the both option, um, only because if they plat the first hundred and sixty-eighth and then market turns, then that development's out there with no community center.
I mean, like the one hundred, the developer's open to add the platting.
At, at the first plat, and that's absolutely fine, but again, I don't think the language would hold well in court, because you can't build a community center with, out a, or, you can't have a plat prior to, like, it's, it's chicken or the egg, almost, right? You can't build something without it being platted, I guess is my point.
So. It's a hundred and sixty-eight, that's what we said. That's when the community center must be built.
Hundred and sixty-nine.
Hundred and sixty-nine.
Yeah.
My understanding from the last month was that the argument, well, that's just not applying to the first track, that applies to total, putting every other track into it. What we're saying here is each track is independently treated. So a hundred and sixty-nine homes, that's when it has to be, you have to commit to, but they have to do the building of the community center. So as long as we can set it up, so this is what it is for track A, this is what it is for track B, this is what, then those conditions are in there for each individual track, and they're not dependent on one another.
Right, the, the way that it's set up is track B and C, um, are together in that the platting of a hundred and sixty-nine, so they could go ahead and plat track B, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they could, they could plat track B, which is a hundred and sixty-eight lots, and not be held to the requirement of building it. My concern is market turns, they build that one tract with no community center, because we've held them to the platting of a hundred and sixty-ninth lot, which is really just the next track. So my point would be, let's either do, do the ands of a hundred and sixty-nine, which is the second track, or the hundredth building permit, or whatever it is. Just so that we're, we've got some force to apply on the developer.
Yeah, you could, you could impose both, I mean, both requirements.
They could say, yeah, or the issuance of a CO for the one hundredth dwelling unit.
And that's, that's sort of what I, I'd lean on.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect? Is there any other? Actually, I think if, if I may, just recommend that you make the motion, since you've had a lot of the comments, and then we can actually have a, a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mr. Chair, uh, as part of your motion, if you could do a synopsis of the additional conditions that are, that are going to be imposed today, that are not a part of the written staff conditions, uh, that would, that would help us immensely. As a matter of fact, right now, I don't think that there's anything that we've heard that we're opposed to. And, um, I, I just want to tell this board that we agree with the staff recommendation and the recommendation of, uh, the residents of Morgan Creek Phase One, uh, if they get truncated. So we appreciate your time. Thank you.
So I don't butcher the, um, the buffering on the west end?
It was, um, the buffer is to meet ninety percent opacity at a six-foot height in three years.
Or view blockage, is that ninety percent view blockage? That's consistent with how we define.
Okay, ninety percent view blockage at six feet height in three years.
I, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendations, uh, for, uh, PUD approval with the minor modifications that include, could you please state that again?
The buffer to meet a ninety percent view blockage at six feet height in three years.
As well as a modification to point G point three, to include additional language to state. And I'm continuing the sentence here, prior to platting of the one hundred and sixty-ninth lot, or the issuance of CO on the hundredth building, residential building.
One hundredth dwelling.
Dwelling.
You said dwelling unit?
Sure.
That, probably, that the, that the building amounts.
Yeah, the CO of the.
Is there a second to that motion? Set. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
I want to.
Item seven, uh, report of. Item seven, report of city commission action on planning and zoning board recommendation, along with planning and housing managers' report.
And the city commission actions, they approved the round of land development text amendments that was brought to them. And those have now been forwarded on to the online service that maintains our electronic version of the land development code. So those should be published soon. Um, looking at new and upcoming cases, we will have a request for another accessory dwelling unit on Oak Drive. There is a PUD modification that is being requested by homeowners within Highland Fairways and specifically homeowners that reside within the manufactured home section of that community. They have concerns about the fact that those homes are considered non-conforming, and that going forward, if those were to be damaged or destroyed, they would have to replace those with, um, site-built home. There is a request for a modification to the PUD for Town Park. Is this correct with the, on Pipkin? Matt?
Yes, for the, um.
For a multifamily development for two hundred and fifty-two units. And, um, finally, Gresham Farms, which is to the west of the item that you just heard today, basically the property surrounding where the new Publix has been built on County Line Road. There's a modification being requested to, um, align, better align what is some, uh, commercial uses along with multifamily uses on the north end of that development.
The second to the last one that you just noted, where's that located specifically?
So this is the one that is right at the entrance into, um, Town Park.
It's, um, southwest corner of West Pipkin and Yates Road, so north of Town Park Boulevard. I think it's across from GEICO.
Yes, yeah.
Across from the parking lot of GEICO.
And currently that property has the future designation of, um, NAC, so it was intended to be a, um, retail center at some point there. And they're asking for a change to reduce the size of that, like, up to down to one point five acres and use the bulk of the property for, um, multifamily development.
If there's nothing else, nobody has any other comments?
Everything is skipping?
Oh, that hasn't come yet?
I thought this was going to be short.